We're gathered together to discuss the requirements of our charter as well as state statutes to discuss the Board of Education budget and other joint meeting requirements regarding your budget as well as back office air functions that could be discussed. So I would like to turn it over.
Recording in progress.
The Chair, Ashley?
I'm sorry.
Tom Council. Steve Jones is one of them.
No worries, no worries. I think we're also at point number one and number two is the Board of Ed budget impactation. So.
I'm not sure if you're adding anything to this. So at this point, I don't know if Dr. Willow would like to share the waterfall graph that we have prepared or one pager?
Should be up there.
Oh, yes, this is right. It's two pages, I'm sorry.
It's now the two pages.
Okay, you want me to pull that up first? Yes, please.
Because we don't have a PowerPoint presentation for tonight, so this is basically, I don't know, who would like to speak to this? And we have the.
I can talk in basic.
Can I get a little bit bigger, please?
Just gonna stress this out.
That's already been done today. We're good. Okay, can you, is that okay?
Yep. And then. Yes.
Hopefully in the public sphere as well.
So I can, I can start off if we want, just kind of give an overview of how to look at the two pager here. So if you take a quick look, the two page is also available on the school's website, www.k12.tolland, I'm sorry, www. And you can, or talland.k12ct.us and under budget. This is one of the first options there. So if you look at it, it's meant to give you a graphical representation of the budget process for the Board of Education. On the left side is fiscal year 22, the Board of Ed budget as it was for fiscal year 22. The green, as you climb up, are the things that were increases leading to that infamous superintendent's budget for fiscal year 23, which was presented back in January. And then the Board of Ed doing its due diligence and taking a look at that budget very deeply. And you'll see the, the red represents the decreases made to the superintendent's proposed budget of 4.94% to the far right, which is the Board of Ed adopted budget of fiscal year 23. So it gives you kind of a graphical representation of how the process went this year. It also gives you a, a basic idea of what the, the chunks are in the budget. Whereas the left side kind of represents, gives you the idea of how it went up and the chunks and why it went up the way it did. For instance, salary and bargaining unit increases. Let's see, the second bar leading up from the Board of Ed budget of fiscal year 22, that's an increase. New positions increased, transportation increased, technology increased, instructional supplies, online subscriptions and special education. You can see how these chunks kind of brought that budget up. And then going down the right side, you see what the Board of Ed did to adjust. They made adjustments to benefits and health, adjustments, you know, to, to technology, moving certain things to ERF, using ERF for capital and technology utilization. And then ultimately some smaller miscellaneous adjustments. And I can go into the details of those adjustments a little bit more in a minute. But this just gives you that idea of how it went up, you know, and how the Board of Ed brought it down three, where, you know, where it kind of landed. A couple of quick notes and then, you know, Christine, you can pop in if you want or anybody. But before it went to the Board of Ed, the superintendent's proposed budget had about $72,000 positions, there were a very large number of positions that were requested for the Board of Ed that were not included in it. So quite a few things were taken out to get it to 4.94. And then the Board of Education doing its due diligence, continue those efforts. And some, some of the reductions made by the Board of Ed were, you know, when you take a look at that, it's a little bit kind of shrunk. But overall, to kind of give you a better idea, they came out of trend analysis that Ms. Griffin had done to look at it and see where some money could be saved. Medicare or FICA, course reimbursements, postage, workers' compensation, furniture and fixtures, you know, examples of cafe tables, facilities, tree, tree and, you know, grounds was reduced. Special education, certain things for the nurse and testing were reduced. What's called CTSEDS, which is a special education system that the state of Connecticut is requiring. Took some of the funding out for that that we were having there. And things moved to the ERF under ERF capital utilization are things like the Promethean boards and the Educational Technology Initiative devices. There's a plan that revolves and those devices were, you know, were part of that plan. So those were moved to ERF for funding as well as certain programming that will probably extinguish in the future here called literacy how for special education, not for general ed. And then some training that was pre, you know, from a area res called East Conne. And by taking and doing those things, they were able to get the budget down to 3.13. So it was a great trend analysis. It was moving some positions over to grants. It was taking and putting some of the items that could be capital technology in the ERF, utilizing it the way it was designed to be used. It was landscaping and other things like that reduced. It was furniture fixtures, cafe tables, things like that reduced. And, and some adjustments that could be made to special education that were made. So that's how that came to be a 3.13. If you scroll all the way to the bottom, this is a pie chart of the basic, you know, chunks of the budget, Board of Ed adopted budget for fiscal year 23. This just gives you a sense of, you know, the, the magnitude of, of these areas. And it gives you a little bit of a different idea of them because it doesn't use the exact same categories. It gives you a different flavor. And ultimately, the highlights of the budget for fiscal year 23 are that. So there is a United States Black and Latino history course required from the state of Connecticut now. And we have a skills for adolescents course for teenagers. So it was funded for grants by many, many, for many, many years. Very important for social emotional development. If the mental health task force also wrote a document supporting it in town. And so there is a position that would be teaching the sections of US Black and Latino history and skills for adolescents. So at the middle school and at the high school level. That's very important because otherwise we would start losing sections and social studies and those sections and AP classes and UConn ECE classes and things like that help, help build transcripts for students so that they're most competitive to colleges when they apply. That's some of the major areas that they look at. So we didn't want to hit or hurt any of the current offerings. And social studies in the United States and in, in general, but other, in high schools across the board has really taken a backseat to math and science, you know, when the S back and other tests like that came out. So it really needs to be a real focus on resurging that. And that's happening across the country, but in places like Talon, we just want to make sure we're not going backwards and we continue to go forwards. This helps do that. And the skills for adolescents helps maintain social emotional health. Math sections of both TMS and THS as well as numeracy coaching, another great benefit of this budget. We can hire and train this person as a numeracy coach so we don't have to bring in outside people for these kinds of trainings. The school district also needed a staff member for bridge courses between some of the courses like pre-calc and calc. Sometimes there are courses that, you know, not as many kids get to benefit out because of the way it's structured and staff structure. So this would help maintain and give kids an opportunity to build skills before jumping into the highest, most advanced classes, giving them the greatest opportunity for better grades and a stronger transcript performance for student, for colleges and applications to colleges. Also, the TMS system needs another math teacher to be able to take on the, take on courses so that we can add more advanced courses down there for kids that are able to do that at a middle school level, getting them better prepared for the high school level. So that job is a split position between TMS, THS and numeracy coaching. So it'd be of massive benefit to the district in a number of different ways and shores up a lot of problems. Facility staff increase, another piece of it is point six. There's an individual who was willing to go to a halftime status rather than retire fully. Individual has a tremendous amount of training. And so this is an opportunity for a very, very, very understaffed department. It's had three people for our facilities and that's very small. If you look at towns around us, they have more facility staff than that. So our district had three, this allows us to go up to 3.5. One person would go to 0.5 and it would allow us to hire a 1.0. So it's a net add of 0.6. But the bottom line is this really, you know, helps a department that's been very understaffed for a long time. And, you know, I don't know if those of you have been around for a while, but the staff that have been here have always been hard workers. But the schools are better maintained and in better shape than they ever have been in the history that I've been here in 16 years that I've been here. And that has a lot to do with the support that these individuals, you know, the work that they've been doing. And they, you know, they can't do it with the staff structure they have. They really need help. And it costs us a lot more if we don't have the right people in place because we can't deal with as many things in-house. We end up having to bring in contractors. It's a losing game not to make, you know, a modest investment doing through that. School counselor, for many years, we were able to, through a grant, support that position. It was a very, very important position at the middle school. Middle school is one of the places where kids are making a transition, you know, from kind of a child to a, to a, you know, to an older adolescent. It's a very vulnerable time and the counselors that are there wrote a very large report about how overwhelmed they were. This has been going on for some time. The grant really helped. The school counselor came in, made a big difference, was also going into classrooms. It was also picking up some of the skills for adolescents. And now that position from the grant needs to be transferred into the, the budget in order to keep crucial position, has always been at that level, really did start to make a difference at the middle school. That's exacerbated now by the pandemic. There's never been a greater. They're incredibly vulnerable at that age, you know, you remember what, what life was like 12, 13, 14 years old. And it's, nobody ever says, gosh, I really missed middle school, missed middle school. I wish I could go back to middle school. So this is an age where, you know, they really do need that support more than, more than almost any other time. And that's a very core position for that. The educational reserve fund, as I mentioned above, utilizing it in the way it was meant to be designed to help continue that one to one. And the reductions made for workers' compensation, compensation, postage, course reimbursements, Medicare, FICA, another, you know, another great benefit of it. It also maintains a very important program piece that we've been working on for many years. Pathways, also known as lighthouse. This is building the academy programs within our school system. So basically a business academy, engineering academy or pathway. Right now in the state of Connecticut, there was a shift after the Shepherd's O'Neill settlement to magnets and charters. And that was designed to make schools more evenly populated and equitable and so on. What it had the effect of doing, you know, better for worse, is for towns like Talon, it increased attrition because they would offer programs that looked like, you know, private school programs and students would leave and take their dollars with them to these programs. So the landscaping Connecticut changed greatly in the last decade or two as public schools became, for the first time in Connecticut, really competing with each other, particularly with those magnets and charters. One of the models that those magnets and charters use is they usually will say they specialize in something aerospace or, you know, or classical arts or something like that. The truth of the matter is, when you really look at what they do, a lot of times a town like Talon is as competitive or even more capable of offering that same programming in ways that they just don't realize. We can't advertise the way these places can advertise. They can put their, their advertisements in movie theaters. Thank God for the last two years no one was going to them. But they still have these advertisements. They put up billboards. You can see them around. They have ads on TV. They have ads in the movie theaters. And when the kids see these ads, they see this, you know, classical arts academy or whatever, and they think, oh, wow, I'd rather go there. And kids would go or be attritioning to these schools. So that can be in the tune of hundreds of thousands of dollars that leave a district. In order to be able to be competitive, we have to be able to show that you don't have to go to the aerospace academy. You can get an amazing engineering program through our engineering pathway here. You don't have to go to X, Y, R's school, you know, you can go to our business academy, our business pathway and get an excellent, amazing business program here. You can graduate with a transcript that highlights that you are part of the business academy or the engineering academy. So these have been very important programs and these academy and pathway programs are expanding over the years. They make us more competitive. That's never been more important than now. Because if you look at what happens with the chef, the chef, you know, settlements recently, they put more money and more power into those magnets and charters, more resources. So Talon has a chance of having more attrition if it's not, you know, preparing itself in a way that makes it self ultra competitive with those other models. So this is a very important piece. And so we, this, this budget also protects the initiatives that we have in place. It also maintains cost avoidance programs. We have programs that are extremely important to Talon. A long time ago, they didn't exist. Talon actually had a lot more trouble when that was the case financially and, and staff wise. Now we have programs that actually include social workers and include other staff. But because they're the umbrella of these programs, these programs are far better. We keep kids in the community and they avoid a lot of costs because they help us provide a much better experience for the kids in their own community with the students, the children they live with in their own town. But they also have the great benefit of avoiding us having to pay out placements for kids going into these excessively expensive outplacement programs. One of the greatest leasing's in the state of Connecticut right now is these, these programs that exist for special education or students, special ed for outplacements. That's something hopefully will get resolved in the next five to 10 years in Connecticut. It's one of the biggest problems we have, but these are incredibly expensive. The average outplacement is about 69,000. The average transport or roughly transport to bring a child to an outplacement is about 10 to 30,000. So one child in an outplace situation can be, you know, can be upwards of 100,000 or more dollars to outof. That's one, that's one child, you know, that's, that's the kind of thing that if you have 29 children in one of the programs like we do, even 10 of them being out would easily be a million dollars. But that program itself doesn't cost them. So it's important that we make sure we're doing these things for our children because they're in the best interest of children, that they also have that benefit of doing the right thing also makes, has a benefit for Talon of being a cost avoidance measure. So, you know, these are, these are very important pieces to this budget that, that the board has done great diligence to maintain and keep part of its efforts. And so it's a two pager for a reason, I think. Where are we? So the objective here was to talk for about 10 or 15 minutes and maybe less with two pages. That's about as far as I can go. So Christine, did you want to add anything?
I'll just add that, you know, as Chair of the Finance Committee, you know, I certainly looked at a lot of the numbers. I did everybody on the board. I know you all got our Q and As. You can see the, some odd 30 something pages that we have. So hopefully you guys, you know, could dig into that and kind of understand where we're coming from. I will say that I do think that this budget supports our students. We, we looked at things like the new positions that Dr. Willett mentioned. We obviously, with COVID, we said one of the silver linings was that we do have the technology that we didn't know how we were going to, you know, bring that to the school. So I think that's really important. And this budget also includes a lot of the, you know, related technology like online subscriptions and that kind of stuff that we now do need. So I think we're really comfortable with everything that, you know, Dr. Willow did put in, that we are really taking care of our, our student needs. And we're moving the district forward. And then as you can see in the waterfall graph, you know, we did remove some stuff that were not, that was not student focused. That was kind of what we, we were focusing on when we did do our reductions. And we also recognize that we have the ERF and that we could take, you know, a sizable amount from that while still maintaining the account or the fund rather, if there was any sort of emergency. So I think overall, this budget is a really, you know, good budget that focuses on our kids and it's our district forward. And hopefully you guys will support it as well, but we're here to answer any questions.
Thanks. So if you're, Ashley, do you want to add anything else before we move to page three?
I think both of them summed it up pretty well. I don't think I have anything to add. As she did say, I mean, we really went through all these questions. I'm not sure how many pages it ended up as a PDF that you guys reviewed versus our ourselves, but there was a lot of questions, a lot of information. And I hope you guys really did get a chance to go through and just really see what we had to go through just to get an understanding and to know where our students need to know. I mean, honestly, we laugh, but like we did struggle, you know, it's been something that we've been talking about for a few years. And so I think even the little details were paid attention to. So I think all together, I truly do believe this, but.
I wanted to say Christine, she did such a great job in putting together these graphs and really boiling down. And Christine also followed all the trends, which I think is really important. She looked at past years and saw what line items had extra money over the years, which I think is great. We definitely worked hard as a board and I support this budget. And I think it's, it's really good for our students, listens to our educators and our administrators. And we took our time to be really detailed and I support this budget and I hope all of you do as well.
Thank you, Ashley. I don't know if any other Board of Education members, they want to speak about the recent patient at all, otherwise. I see non, I have to read the patients and suggestions that you have regarding cost or regarding consolidation of non-education services and cost savings. For state statute number back 13 dash 60. So I don't know if Lisa or any counselors have any recommendations or suggestions they'd like to operate this time learning, non-education services and cost savings.
In, in the past years, we certainly have done a lot of sharing between the Board of Education and the town. Currently, the town does pretty much most of the property maintenance, the landscaping and all that for the Board of Education. It's all under us. There's a lot of interaction regarding the sharing that we do with the financial information. There's times that I've helped them. They've given me information. We work together, not, not in joint department, but certainly we've worked together on a lot of that, a lot of the purchasing of items. We have utilities consortium that we do as for electricity purchasing as well as the combined utility reserve fund where we manage all of our utilities together. So there's some advantages to all of that. We also participate in a shared ECHIP program, which is the Employee Health Insurance Program. It's a self insurance program which has saved us over a million dollars in past years by switching to that. So there's a lot that we currently do right now. We've looked at other things. We have our joint agreement regarding the grounds maintenance and the facility needs for the schools and such, not the facilities itself, but the exterior areas. I don't know if you have anything else that you'd like to add?
You know, I would just say that when I do go to meetings that I, that I attend around the state, Talon has so many, so many things that we do in synergy with the town perspective or Board of Ed. You know, Lisa mentioned some of them, but the building and grounds is a big one. We, you know, we share the burden. We work very closely together. There may be lines as to who owes where, but the bottom line is that at the end of the day, you know, the town and the schools support each other in a variety of ways with respect to facilities and fields and grounds. The USIP agreement, till the Internal Service Fund is, it's a brilliant situation. It was created some time ago. The funding model is a very unique one. The board does have some responsibility for the funding model there, which saved the town from a bond. That's a big deal. That was something done as a creative construct, budgeting. And that is a synergy between the town and the Board of Ed, very unique model. We will not see that in many places where a board is carrying debt in some way like that. You'll also see that, you know, as, as Lisa had mentioned, that, that ECHIP, which Steve Werdner got us involved with a long time ago, is another brilliant self-funded insurance system that is extremely supportive and is also a complete, you know, completely synergistic thing between the town and the Board of Education. This town does an amazing job of actually sharing these services and these synergies that you do not see in many other towns. So there's many, many, many places where those things work extremely well together. And in terms of how we interact overall with the town, you know, Lisa and I are in regular communication, have a very good relationship, great relationship. I've had a great relationship with every town manager that Talon has had, exceptional people all around. And our staff, we're very closely together, always talking, always supporting each other. Each has its own full load and we each respect that and run around with our, you know, like chickens with, you know, what kind of. But we, we, you know, push each other up whenever each other falls down. So we have a great, you know, great working relationship with the synergy. We're like one as it is. So your town is a really wonderful set of systemic supports and synergies that are not seen in other places. And so kudos to the town for that. It's just, there's, you know, tremendous number of examples of that, you know, here, which is great.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Any questions or comments from council members before we move on to public participation? I'm looking, where is he?
You know, I only have one for this area, but just because I went through the Q and A stuff and I'm planning on using that document to kind of go through with my questions. And the one that comes to mind on this specifically is there are 40,000 plus another 5,000 in Tyler Industries for software updates. And this to me seems like an absolute opportune time to get the Board of Ed on the UNIS software that the town uses rather than investing in updating and doing new training. I think this would be a really good time for us to look at getting them to work at the same system. Because I believe Tyler owns UNIS.
Thank you. They own a number of different products.
It seemed like it was a $40,000 software upgrade only to spend the money on getting them to work on the same system and have consistency across the board.
Chairman Jones is.
Yeah, of course.
In response to that, I've done that in a few other communities. And there, there are cost benefit analysis that has to be done. It's not just adding, for example, not just adding the Board of Education onto the town's UNIS system. You actually have to purchase that and it could increase the cost of the annual maintenance contract on $40,000 there alone. It, it depends. It's because they have such a large budget that's really going to drive the cost much higher than what we're paying now.
But it is the offset of what they're paying in theirs too, so.
Right. I, I understand it. The other thing in implementing such a thing requires a lot of different things that have to happen. You do have to look at the chart of accounts. And the Board of Education has a lot of different reporting requirements versus what the town has to do. We, we have to, on our side, we have to report under what is called GAAP. We have a full accrual basis, modified accrual, budgetary. There's, there's three different ways that we're, we're doing things and have to maintain our record keeping. Then the Board of Education also has different things that they need to account for, such as by building, by function for, for the the FMS, what is it? The EFS.
EFS.
The EFS. It used to be called the EDO when it's an annual report that they have to provide to the state regarding all their spending. And that has to be categorized in a certain level of charted accounts. Some of the issues that we ran into while doing this is there weren't sufficient segments to make it work for everybody. We tried and some had to give, some had to take on some of the reporting requirements. So certainly, we had to bring a consultant in. You do have to do a lot of data transition and mapping from one system to the next. There's a lot involved. Last time I did that was probably, I'm thinking 15 years ago. And I think it was in the cost neighborhood of $35,000 to $50,000 for that consultant to be able to link both, both data banks, because not only the Board of Ed. Cause not only the board of ed, but the towns would have to be transitioned over to a new charted accounts. So it's quite an undertaking. It's certainly something that, you know, before you would even think of doing that, you really want to do a thorough analysis and maybe have a consultant look at it, look at what would be required and then get the cost estimates if it would really truly be cost beneficial and if it will work for them. Because then you also have to look at servers. Now you need to increase six space on your server. Or if you decide to go out into cloud, it, it's very costly to do that, but you can get cloud-based UNIS software, which again, you're paying for that service. You're not buying servers, but you're paying for that and you're locked into that. So there's a lot involved.
So, but they have server, they're doing all this stuff on their side now. So the server is there on their side now, so it wouldn't be a hundred percent additive. And it's also get into line with what we had in the last town council with the idea of looking at how we can combine back office stuff and find efficiencies there. And I think every town around us, their board of ed is on UNIS. And that would also give us the ability to get into the open and clear gov site that you have right now for the town side. So I know that you have to map the accounts and it's a nightmare. I've gone through that many times too, but last time we did it was fifteen years ago. I would hope that technology is better now, you know, than fifteen years ago. But I think, I think, Ron, again, stress, we're looking at almost fifty thousand dollars to update a software when we could use fifty thousand dollars to, um, look at a consultant to create one system for the whole town, get everybody on the open gov stuff that you have and have the availability to easily look at information back and forth in the same system. I just think spending the fifty thousand now, the next time we bring it up, it's going to be what we just said, fifty thousand dollars to do this. Now we're going to spend another fifty. So from a non-education perspective, I think it's something that we should consider to actually looking for the shared service and to combine it and have it in one place with one system and it enhances everything.
And I think, um, most Board of Education, there are some more on UNIS, but others are on Tyler Technologies' infinite visions. Because that product seems to work better for Boards of Education where it doesn't work for UNIS and Talons. So you do have some on UNIS. It's been a challenge, but it's certainly something that's where the boards want to go. The superintendent and I would have to look at how we make that happen or at least do.
Explore it, at least learn it, explore it.
If it doesn't work, I, I know it's, it can be challenging.
You tried that a few years ago. I guess there was something there.
In my time here, we get asked about it every year, but it has never been.
Well, yeah, there was. No, you go ahead.
You have more of this, but I remember reading something about this. I went back and looked at everything I could find on it. That Ivy does have the opportunity for, you know, more detailed boards of ed seem to benefit from. And something about UNIS, and I, they have good software, it's good software. So I, I don't know if I've ever used UNIS, but, um, that it was more structured, it was simple structures. And, and so it was somewhat limiting and made some things harder or, or board of ed operations. So I guess the only thing that you'd really want to do, and I guess if you could get a consultant, we could pay some money to have them really analyze it. I think there'd be a tremendous amount of lost productivity in the time that you're trying to make a transition from recoding everything. And so it really has to be looked at very carefully as to whether the benefit you get with such a thing is that is worth the lost productivity, transition time and expense of everything you'd have to go through to make that transition. Having said that, um, you know, what, what is it that you don't feel like you have now? I don't know what the one state thing is, but the town and the board regularly share information. There is a constant flow of information back and forth from the town to the board. And we do have to do a lot of state reports and things that require constant access to a system that has a ridiculous amount of detail, um, that I don't think UNIS has the same kind of detail structure. So, um, the, the real question would be what, what is the tangible? You know, to go through all of that, what is that thing that you don't have now that you're trying to achieve?
Transparency. The town site, we can click on anything and it goes down to the levels. Anybody can click on, anybody can go up there and look at it. So, and to be honest with you, consolidation of back office stuff, which we talked about since year five for me, so.
That's, that went through three iterations each time they decided that there were reasons why that wouldn't be beneficial for town. But, you know, anything can be reviewed again, looked at, but that has been looked at quite a few times. And, you know, when I do talk to the school and board staff, I really, you know, I think it is definitely always a question worth asking. I think that everybody right now on both sides feels like we're tapped to the absolute edge of what we can do. So I don't know. I, I think that's, that's always got kind of a trepidatious element to it, the people, you know, on the side, the ones pulling the sleigh up the hill, if you will.
Thank you, Dr. Rela. I thought Counselor Murray and Counselor Lou both had a great experience.
Sure, I had a couple of follow-up questions to what Kami just had. So, um, there is a software update included, is that what you were referring to, Kami?
Forty thousand dollars a year.
It's an update, I believe so. And how long is that expected to, once the last I've updated?
I don't really know for sure, but I don't think it's every year.
Okay, so is this something that before the next update happens, that the town and the board of ed could take a closer look at? Because we're talking about a budget that starts in July. So it might not be something that's feasible to do between now and July. But if this is a two or a three-year update, that gives a reasonable timeframe to look into a potential shared service and to answer all the questions that you asked, as well as addressing the transparency concerns and requests coming from others. So is that a fair request?
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand the reasoning for doing that. I would say it is whatever the council says, but sure, everything deserves to be.
You know, the council, the goal is the council and the Board of Education. There's got to be some sort of agreement for both sides.
I think the goal here is for the town budgeted money. And we're talking about money for, whether it's for the board of ed or it's for the town, ultimately it's for Talon.
Right.
Uh, for us to utilize the best software that we can to achieve any potential savings in share activities. So I think that's the goal and the, uh, just as important is transparency. So to find a software package that meets both of those goals, that is cost effective. You know, if you know that you have a two-year timeframe or a three-year timeframe to review and make a recommendation, that doesn't, um, give you a very short amount of time to try to work something out. Plenty of time to figure it out and figure out the best way forward.
And implementation of doing that sort of conversion together alone can take a couple of years.
Sure.
Just because of what's involved. So.
Okay, so how do we make sure this becomes something that we actually follow up on as opposed to it's just an idea we threw out here tonight?
I think there's got to be some sort of consensus that that's what everybody wants to do. That given us some direction, we go forward, we try to research it.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, from the standpoint of, I like the best software. If the best software is that, then I think Lisa and I started to review that and look at it, set up some meetings and really look hard at that. You know, we'd be willing to do that. And, and if the software is better, we want better, you know, the more easy the software, those time we have to waste.
Okay.
So.
Is this something that could be touched on when we meet again in October?
I think it could be, otherwise I'll give a special meeting. I would say, so I want to make sure the guys, if Ms. Anne Craig's still the other, if Steve's hand is still up, but we could just do a general consensus of counselors, want to waste the opinions on the record that we like. Dr. Rela and Lisa to begin discussing this, to bring it forward, to have it in a joint meeting. We could do that and have it in the term of a day, but Counselor Lou.
Well, I just want to make sure Ms. Murray's.
Yes, so that was, these are my questions, thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I would, uh, fully concur with Ms. Murray, she actually took my question. But she said much more articulately than I could because she speaks finance and I don't. My concern is, and I understand exactly what Ms. Murray is saying as far as, um, investing now and then looking at this down the line. But the concern is that we're going to say, okay, let's invest this forty thousand dollars right now. And then the next time this is brought up is, well, we invested the forty thousand dollars. Why did we, like, why, why, why do we, you know, why can't we just continue on with this? Cause that forty thousand dollars is now going to waste if we're not going to adopt this unit, if we're going to look at something new. And, and so I would, I would, uh, concur with the recommendation that rather than spending that forty thousand dollars right now is let's take a look at it and let's invest it in, in getting a study done. Because we're all hypothesizing as far as what will work, what won't work. My, my, I mean, I'm not an expert in, in computers. I deal with them a lot, I have all of us do. But I think it's something that we need to have somebody take a look at it to assess on a universal holistic package. So it's not just Board of Education, it's not just the town operations. It's looking at all the needs and then formulating a full, a full package, including the existing software packages, including developing something from scratch, including any number of different things. So we can actually have, just like we would with any other project that we undertake, get three different recommendations as far as what is like, you know, what, what we're looking at. Using an example would be is this, uh, is a whole miracle field. We ask for a study to be done so that we can get all the information in front of us. And I think that's really what we need to do at this point, is to take a look at it and say, what is the best thing that we need? We want to get transparency. And I think that is something that is extremely important, is so that all of us can have access to all the information that we would need, not just so that if I want something, uh, from the Board of Education, that we'd have to have them go on to their own system and I'd have to see what I, what we can get from them or from the, uh, just like with the town, that we can have access to everything all at once and be able to easily compare it, rather than having to have somebody spend time looking at, uh, at, at, you know, at what's done, formulating it together for us and then getting the finalized package where we can actually, it's, I find that it's best for us to be able to do our own data digging and sort of see things. So, cause that's how I am, formulate our own questions on it, rather than relying on somebody trying to understand what I'm looking for. So I think that's really what we need to do is rather than investing the forty thousand dollars now, then saying, you know, then facing the issue of what do we do now that we've invested the forty thousand dollars? Well, this is the best package, we don't know what it is. And so I really think that I would, my, I mean, Mr. Chair, if we're looking at a poll or if we're looking at a straw poll for that, I would say, uh, that is my preference, is to invest this forty thousand dollars into a study so that we can look at something for the whole town, not just for the Board of Education, not just for the town manager's office, but for everything. So they get one singular operation and be able to see everything in a universal picture that way. And so, uh, that was more of a speech than a question, but I'm very good at that, so I, I hear the pharmacist here, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lou. I mean, the recommendations and suggestions, see if I can ask any questions.
Oh, good, so I fit in, all right.
You did.
I can give you suggestions, okay, so.
And I don't know if Lisa, if you were looking to respond or if you had any response.
Well, I'm just from what Counselor Lou just stated. I'm, I'm thinking you're looking more to be able to look at data, whereas with any, any of our financial software, none of you really have access to go. We, we couldn't out of, as an internal control, can't really give you access to our systems to look at this. However, the product that we use for our budgeting book, and I'm, I'm thinking you're more thinking about that process where you can go in and recharge different ways and you could drill down to deeper detail. That is what I'm thinking that you want to be, have the ability to look at.
Well, that's more, it's, I mean, well, yes, I'd like to see that. I mean, that's something that I would always like to take a look at. But I understand that for something, for just the, our general public is being able, again, with the integration of, looking at something for integration with the open gov, because we've already had questions, you've already addressed that. Yeah, and so in everything, integrating into that, so that it's something that people could see. And again, I would just like to see something so that we, going along with the lines of the background, backroom integration and consolidation, you know, this is something I think would be consistent with that. And I think it's something that would meet our goals and, and would be, would be the best investment at this point.
Okay, cause that would also, I mean, if, what you're looking for is for the transparency for the public. I have no objection to that, I think it's a FOI anyway. You know, certainly, uh, what we have is ClearGov, OpenGov, that's another product that's out there. But we already own ClearGov, we don't have the transparency for every piece of it. What we do have for the budget process that lets you pull down several years of detail. Anyway, um, that is a separate cost from the, from the UNIS or, or intermittent, um, infinite vision software. However, um, either software could download into that sort of product. And if, I think it depends on what the ultimate goal is. If the ultimate goal is to combine finance departments and, and have that sort of operation, then you look at maybe combining into one software. You, you could look at the cost benefit of, um, if you combined into one software, it may still be the same price that each side is paying anyway. That's part of the analysis, the study you have to do. However, if you're looking at trying to be able to query data, either, either software can be loaded into an open gov or a clear gov, you know, we have to pay for an extra module. But that may be less costly to do in the long run than to try to combine the two softwares, unless that's the ultimate goal of both that things. Either way can be done. You're still, if you want to have that capability though, even if it's one system, will still have to get the other piece of the ClearGov product to provide that other additional transparency information.
Thank you.
But I think Christine, you have your, your.
I didn't know that, or. Well, I'm sure if it's just counselors on this one. I had emailed you a while ago. I do know that Tyler Tech, that City Ask for a Product Demo of Tyler Technologies, just because I thought a technology company likes to sell their products. And so why not come in and do a demo? Um, I bet you, I mean, this is all hypothetical, we're talking here. I bet you would call the salesperson at Tyler Technologies that they would do the demo for both town council and the board of ed. Or if you had a committee, there was a couple of board of ed members and, you know, FFC members. And town, the research, it's not, it's not a shared service committee. These people are brave, it's more of just an exploratory, like what's the technology? Because part of my frustration, and I lost the bet, I'm not saying anything. Part of my frustration with the budget process question, well, it's, I, I feel like our system is old and sometimes you can't get the information you're looking for. So it's not really the transparency that's missing, it's just hard for an old system to make the information you're looking for transparent. Does that make sense? So I don't think it hurts to see what's out there and if it can benefit all the town. I'm on their website now and they got beautiful brochures. I'm sure they'd be happy to come and talk to us. But whether that fits into this budget process or not, I feel like it would be a, you know, a task. So, you know, taking the time and not waiting, but taking the time just to look at it. Yeah, so, I'll be fine.
Thank you, thank you, Christine, my Christine.
So I, I do like Christine's suggestion to, you know, let's see what they have available. I, I have to say, I'm, about being able to drill down on the numbers. I don't think the board of ed side has that capability. So I would love to see that brought over to the board of ed and whether it's a shared system or even just access to some sort of system or module that Lisa was mentioning. I think that, um, for the transparency purposes would be wonderful to be able to drill the numbers and kind of be able to look at the next level, I think would be really important. So I would absolutely like to see something looked at where this is, or I guess selfishly, I just want to, you know, the, the board to be able to have the same capabilities. It sounds like that the council has, so that would be my, my thoughts, thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Lisa, if you want to respond or.
No, but, well, one of the things is, anybody is welcome. It's, it's on our website, I'm in the finance department. If you drill down to the budget for the current fiscal year that we're in, you'll be able to see a sample of how the budget book works and the interactions and. you'll be able to see a sample of how the budget book works and the interactions and information that's out there if you just wanted to see what it looks like. There's a short video that I posted on how to use the system as well as the budget book there. So you're all welcome, of course, it's a public document that everyone can use to see if that's sort of what you're looking for.
I have a question, I don't know if that might give consensus or not to make that change at this point, or if we just want to plan for a joint meeting, it would be better to put into earlier motions for a future budget year, rather than kind of at the midpoint last third of the current year. Is there any objections to that?
I guess my only question on that would be, and again, this would fall back to the Board of Ed, but with the idea that we want to kind of move forward with something like this and look at it, even if it was reviewed and we say we're going to keep them the way they are, but we're going to put ClearGov on both or whatever, whatever that does to this all, then I would wonder, is there any harm in not spending the $50,000 this year?
You're looking at me, like?
I guess I would, I would say yes, because this system is, you know, I don't know whether, you know, what, I'd love to see, and talked to Lisa about munis, but this thing runs, you know, just about the way barely that we can get what we need. So anything without an update, I would be really afraid of at this point, because it can't crash on us, we can't not have it. We use this thing so many times a day that it really is not an option not to have this thing working. So I would be nervous about not doing it. I like the idea of pursuing it, as Mr. Hurry said, you know, what, you know, going ahead and doing it at this very carefully, as I think was a great idea, Mr. Luba was suggesting, that I would, they do kind of have you by the neck a lot of times, because if it doesn't get updated and, you know, we call them desperately, why the heck isn't this working? Well, we do have to do the update, and we all have a previous version of the update. You know, then, then we would have a huge problem, huge problem. And it is what we use for everything, everything, they were all of it. So we rely on that, it is one of the most critical pieces for the operations, my point.
So it isn't that it's critical to get updated, but we could come back to it for the next budget year. So invest in it, we get it explained out in the long run, if this works out, we have the recommendations when the next update cycle comes through, we get transition to it.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to always look at things like that. I would be very nervous about not coming up, just, just. And as, as software goes, like the state of Connecticut requires us to do stuff at $20,000, because the, you know, it's a teacher, you know, Tiana, it's, you know, true, true on project teacher thing that the state requires us to have. So that amount of money isn't out of the crazy range of what software sometimes asks to spend to do that.
Are there any objections from councilors, I don't think that that pass forward, you know, basically run it and update it, but have this verbal credit here and now to?
I, I'd like to voice my objection to it, but I mean, I know that that's something that, you know, it's, I think it's something that we should look at right now. I understand the, the concern of Dr. Willough, but I think it's something that, this is something that, again, I voice my concerns and I'm just letting it be known that, you know, and whatever, whatever the final decision is, that I, I buy by it, but I'm just, those are my concerns. And I like this brought up for, prior to our next budget session, is to have something where if we are going to go forward with this and allow that this $50,000 be spent for this expenditure, I respect the request that we then immediately sign up to Mr. Chair with, and have Ms. Hancock start looking into vendors, so that we can have something lined up so that we're not at the same point next year saying, okay, well, what are we going to do?
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
Thank you.
You wanted to say something, say, oh, you agree to it and that it falls off the radar. It's like, hey, what did I mean, that next month ago?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman, but I don't know, that's a good to give your hand raised, I know the councilors.
Yeah.
Okay.
Another thing, just as a point of worth, it does seem like, it's the, it's also wrapped up in maintenance and support.
Yeah.
So it's not like, we can't not be able to call them, because we didn't pay for that great maintenance and support costs. It's, it's just impossible for us to do it.
Service and cash flow.
Yeah, yeah, we need them. We need to call them and say, why is this thing not running? Why is it not on this, that, we can't do, we can't, we can't get any of it. So.
Anything else?
Lisa, what was that, I know we have budgets, we were talking about a few minutes ago. It was a little difficult to find, what is? Oh, yeah, it's under the Finance Department, under Talent, Talent, talent.org. You go to departments, you have to click down the dis- priority list.
I think you need to fix that, I think it's the alphabetical order that was.
You know, it's, it's the ones that are hit, hit up most often in finance plus, and so that's how we're going to help you. But if you go into Finance Department, do you see budget information? I don't know if I can share my screen with you. If you go on budget information, you'll be able to pull up this year's budget book. So for example, let me just show you. Do you want, does everyone want to speak or?
Go for it.
Put in the minutes so that not only could we, we have it, but it would also be available to members of the public?
Yeah, talent.org is Finance Department.
I can help you put it in.
All right.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, and I think I can also kind of copy your public's advice on that, because I actually seem to have a lot of cats, because it is a very useful site.
It's you. If you go under Town Budget Information. So for example, okay, I had mentioned that there was a video, this is just a short video that tells you how to use the website for the budget software, and then this here, the link that I just clicked on, this is our budgeting book. So it's, it's the normal book that would have been created, and you could pull all types of information down.
Lisa, didn't you get this for the town?
Yes.
This was one of your initiatives?
Right.
This, and this is impressive, I saw Lisa brought this to your town, and I've been impressed by it, I thought it was a really neat way of organizing data and information, that's what you're talking about.
Well, we asked, yeah, we asked for this. Let's, let's, Council, we asked for the ability to be, and I got to drill down and see the details and put that.
So this is the software that does it.
Create more transparency.
So for example, here, pull up the town manager's budget page. Oh, well, this is last year's budget, so you'll see Mike Rosen here.
Oh.
And, and what it gives you is all types of information. It tells you the overall cost of the budget, how much it went up from the previous year. It kind of shows a trend here of the budget. It shows that's how much we budgeted, this is budget to actual. So there's a lot of information here. This one shows where it had gone over the original adopted budget, because you, you know, we had it amended, it wasn't like we just overspent, but it, we compared to the original book. So there's a lot of information. There's different pie charts that shows you each, you know, just like Walt did tonight, showing the percent of payroll, how much goes for different office supplies and such. Then you can even, you know, look at more trends. And then you have a lot more drilled down data here. And it talks about our goals and objectives, which is, you know, a little different than how you, your, your budget book is a little different because of the different ways you have to report. But this is how the town has to report for us. As far as for education.
I think you have to go into too much detail, because there's a lot of people from the public who want to get to that portion of the meeting, where residents can ask, input their.
Sure, I, I will get out of here, just trying to, thank you, Lisa, figure out.
Thank you.
So I think, Council, when you were checking out, maybe you have a question for us? Okay.
Sorry.
So if there's no one?
I didn't see a wire grab.
Yeah. Let us finish.
I'm not doing that.
If there's no other questions from the councilors, that's item three, I would then open it up to item four, which is questions from the public with a limited limit, specific to the Board of Education budget, with questions being directed by the council chair to the appropriate body for response. So if you're on Zoom, there is the raise hand function, otherwise star nine. If you're on a mobile device, and again, you can say your name and address, people are speaking. Unfortunately, I'm talking to the timer here, some of the people I own.
Um, Dr. Willough is in the timer, he has.
I got one, I'll do it.
Are you, are you, are you good to send him my test?
Well, I, I don't have my tech in front of me, the owl is hooked up to someone else. But I can show you how. Because there's no stress involved at all with doing all that.
Yeah, Councilor Luba's opted.
Do you want me to do that? You know, I can hold it back.
Councilor Luba's opted to cover the timing for this, this portion of the meeting, so. With that being said, I see Reenie B. Saw has their hand raised, just making notifications turn. Just want to unmute, there you go.
Thank you, Steve, um, Reenie B. Saw, 230 Grant Hill Road. I appreciate the conversation. I just would like to say that I lived in a town who had munis for both the schools and for the town. It was not a problem at all. We had one CFO, we were, I believe, probably had less staff overall, because one group was able to do everything. We had open gov, it worked fine. And, you know, while I appreciate the conversation, we're talking about $45,000 in a $42 million budget. So I, not to say that that's not worthwhile, I don't understand really the hesitation. There's plenty of other towns that are doing this. I understand no one wants to make this big of a change, it is disruptive, but once you get there, I think at the end of the day, it will be well worth the time and effort put in. With that said, I do still feel like the 3%, 3% plus is pretty high as an increase when we have less students once again than we've had before. And, you know, I, I feel like there are probably more efficiencies that we could see. So, you know, we, we have more teachers coming on for less students than we've had. It, it's a little confusing why that needs to happen. So that's my input, but I do think, at least on the munis versus two different systems, I think the cost savings could be far greater than just, you know, just the software cost, because I think we could save on some of the other positions and that type of a thing, because they could be shared. And I've seen it happen, I've lived it, so just, that's my input, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, so Kate Howard-Better?
Hi, everybody, Kate Howard-Better, 103 Goose Lane. First of all, thank you to the Board of Ed for passing this budget eight to one. I think this is about time that we have really making sure that our students and our community have what they need. But my question really has to do with the pre-investments. And I don't know if, I, I know I came in late, so maybe that's something that y'all are going to talk about later. So if that's the case, I could just shut up until then. But I'm curious about the impact of the pre-investments that were made over the last two years and why that sort of like compounded to this 3%, 3.13%, I believe, increase this year. So that's my question. And I'd just like to point out that my sixth grader and my ninth grader, every single one of their classes has 26 children in it, every single one. So that is a staffing issue, that is a class size issue. And again, that may be something later, but I just want to put that out there. Thank you all for this discussion, I appreciate you all.
If I don't know if that question was suited for Christine or?
I would say I know Christine has the numbers, I have someone discussed that, so she would hear that.
All right, so regarding the pre-investments, yes, as we all know, that due to kind of leftover funding because of COVID expenses that didn't, we didn't end up using, such as the buses, we did use some of the leftover funding to pre-invest. I have in my notes, it was approximately $150,000 that would be considered more recurring expenses. And all of that, anything we had that was recurring has been put back into this budget. So there is nothing that was taken out, that was ignored, but it's all back in the 3.13. And we did, we were able to actually use part of, so for example, the literacy how that we pre-invested, we were able to use some of the ERF for that. And we were fortunate that when we ran the, the numbers for the health insurance, the pre-investment we had made for that, the investment that we're making next year has been, has been covered, so we are fully funded for that. So there is nothing that we had pre-invested that is not included in this budget.
Thank you, Christine. Liz Costa.
Uh, thank you very much, I thank the Board of Ed for voting eight one in favor of this budget. I think it's telltale that it's an hour and 10 minutes into a budget meeting and you haven't talked about students or education. But I fully support this budget, thank you.
Liz, can you include your address for?
My apologies, my apologies, 54 Jesilein Town.
Okay, Liz. All right, is there anyone else from the public again, if the raise hand function or star nine, your mobile device? Going once, going twice, all right, three times, we are at either five, so it's questions and or questions for Board of Education from Town Council members, specifics to this budget. I know, I already looked around and saw some people that were excited to get out their, their books and their questions. I would definitely appreciate it, councilors, you know, that they're open people, one person capitalizing 20 or 30 minutes of questions. So if you have a few, ask those with some follow-ups and then allow the floor to other councilors to go around at least two times and ask those questions. That's just kind of General Roberts rules, I don't want to stifle the conversation, but I just want to give everybody time to let you know, person waiting to line clock to ask their question. Councilor Luba, and then, Councilor Hurry, do you have any?
Sure.
Okay.
All right, basically, I know that a lot of my other issues would be covered by somebody more knowledgeable than I am, so I'm not going to take much time to the floor right now. But the one question I do have, it was an eight to one vote, I'd like to hear from the one person who voted no as far as the reasons why they were, they, they opposed this budget. Because I think that, and not to put, not to put them on the spot, but it's, there's reasons that I, that I would like to hear, if there are any, if they want to, if they want to, if they want to come forward with that and state why.
So I guess I'm the one? I'm the one, just to put things in perspective, a lot of the reasons why I voted no are not really in the council's purview. It was more of where I thought the money should go in our line items. And my main reason was the non-certified salaries, the non-certified salaries. And maybe this was just confusion with our software and getting the information. But it just, I grew like a more conservative 2% to 4%. And I don't believe that anyone should be getting a 15% raise. So that's my, my reason for voting no. The number itself, I think, I really support the work that the board did. I think that we, we cut down on a lot of non-education expenses already. And if you kept that number, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that. I would just like to see the board redirect some of that one, so that's more on our side than your side. But it wasn't the number, it was, it was more the allocation of.
Thank you, I, again, I didn't mean to put it, put you on the spot or put anybody on the spot with this, but it's, but it was just something, I wanted to know what it was. And I think that's, the public also, we, we didn't know what it was as well.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Um, I really do support the addition of the math coach. I think that's something that, I mean, I remember when, when Griffin was just a parent, she was just a parent, you know, at a community workshop, talking about math. Really is a position that is going to help our students fill, I don't want to say fill a whole book, fill something that, you know, we got emails about, and I think I'm very proud of that, I'm proud of the work this board did. And just because there was one no vote, doesn't mean we didn't work hard. So I really support the decision that the whole board made, and I will support the budget going forward. But that was my reason.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Luba, so, Councilor Hurry, and then?
I have, yeah, you know, I have real to go first.
Okay.
So my first question, I know you've touched upon, but does the Board of Ed feel that this budget adequately funds some to meet the vision, mission and goal of the town? some to meet the vision, mission, and goal of the town public schools?
Yeah, I, I mean.
It's a great job. You're in chair, I'll, I'll follow you.
Well, you know, I can believe that we really went through this and by maintaining them halfway, by having the visions that Dr. Willard has, or having these students get that additional, I guess it's going to be like the line item honor degree to have that option, I think is really important, as Christina said, just that. Interventionalist, well, I won't call her interventionist, but having her go from the high school into the middle school to bridge gap and to have more of our staff wins, I think is very important. And that was one of my main concerns was like, I rather, I mean, I know we have to have technology, so what we live in, but I'd rather have a teacher in front of the students than have technology. And honestly, this year we had to use ERF or, or technology devices, and we're not going to be able to do that again. So that is going to have to be something that we're going to see in our budget. So we have to take that for what it is this year. So going forward, just know that there are going to be additional expenses, but for this year, I believe we did a really good job meeting all the needs that we have.
Good job.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. So the way I look at it, the way it works in my mind, you can kind of break up the increases into two parts. There's the stuff we have to pay no matter what. So that's the contractual thing. So that's the buses, that's special education. And then there's the other things that, like you mentioned, are kind of more, what else do we have that we'd like to support? For this year, I think the number one thing in my book would be recovering losses from the past couple of years from the pandemic. And the other thing would be mental health, which kind of goes hand in hand with that. And then, as Dr. Willard mentioned, keeping our students competitive when they leave to go on to their career or to college. And I do feel that this budget does a good job of supporting those efforts. It has the contractual things covered, obviously, supports classes like the skills for adolescence class and the SCL training, which are very important efforts towards the mental health aspect of that. And it also supports pathways, which is more of a reorganization of how things work. But it, but it does support that in a sense. It's not cutting positions that are important. That being said, I'm happy to hear suggestions that the council makes about efficiencies and things. I think that's an excellent conversation to have. But I do feel that this budget, its current form, is supportive of students. If you do have any other Board of Ed members who want to respond, if not, it's not.
That was a yes to the question, to the answer? That was the answer, right? Yes. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure. Does this budget allow town public schools to provide the same, more or less services to students compared to services being offered this year?
In terms of from this year to next year?
Yeah.
Well, I do think that we actually kind of provide more, given like, once again, we have the math specialist working in the other courses. I do, so I think that ultimately, I know you're kind of looking for a direct answer. Yes, it does provide more than we have this year.
Okay. And what happens if the town council does not approve a 3.13% increase? What gets cut?
Well, we did try to ask Dr. Willard to come up with suggestions. And I think if we go lower, we're going to have some detrimental issues coming up because we, you know, thankfully, he did work with the town to get to healthcare and get costs down where we could. And when we asked him to come up with ways that we can save, like I said, we had to use our ERF. And we still have some money in there, but as he was saying, if we have outlays, it's gone. So it's, it's going to be a very tough call.
You used the word detrimental, which got my attention. Detrimental to the students?
I would say, I wouldn't even know where that first cuts would have to go. I mean, that's, I'd have to defer to him because we asked him for a list, and like I said, we still had to go to the ERF to get funding, so.
A maintenance budget is about 2.5% roughly. And there's so many ways to answer that question. I'll start with one that everybody can agree with. We've got so many state mandates, hundreds and hundreds of mandates. The average job today of educators is about, you know, 0.6 function of what it used to be because of all the other stuff. Give you a very small example of that, I've used this before. It's easily tangible, one people can see. We have hundreds of PPTs, hundreds of them. The state of Connecticut says that administrators have to chair PPTs. That immediately takes a person who is a 1.0 FTE and makes them something like a 0.8, 0.7, you're getting less out of every employee than you used to. So the same number of employees are overwhelmed with more mandates, more work. So anytime you get a budget that's less than a maintenance budget, it means that it eats into things and people that are already over tasked by hundreds of mandates that exist on top of the workforce as it is. So at one point, I did something that looked at 10 years ago. You got less in the district now than you had 10 years ago with respect to resources for general education students. Large cuts usually take the impact of things in general education. It's the arts, it's the unified arts, it's the music programs, it's the intervention programs, it's that kid who's struggling math or science, which just can't, isn't quite there to be a special identification, which can be a good thing, but ends up slipping into that because there aren't RTIS or VI interventions to help them. And so it generally hits right at the general education student. And so you've seen an erosion of that over a span of time, not only this town, but any other towns, as it gets, you know, as these mandates get excessively, you know, burdensome. And people struggle with how to manage that. So, you know, you, you've got employees that are, you know, now doing a fraction of what they, what they used to be able to do because of all the other stuff they're mandated to. Usually it'll hit in art, music, technology, unified arts, social studies, things like that. In this district, you know, you don't have a curriculum director, you don't have a social studies coordinator, you don't have positions like that. And, you know, that's another thing. It just kills me that in the United States, the social studies take in a back, in the backseat to some of this other stuff. So you see that, and every time you do have a lower than maintenance budget, it deeply impacts the quality of, of your programming overall. Another example is world language. We had some hard hits a few years ago. You lost world language entirely in middle school. It disappeared completely for a year. When it did come back, it used to be that all kids could take a full world language program every single day of the week in middle school and then be able to go on to Spanish II at the high school. That really doesn't exist anymore. Now it's an every other day, 42-minute special rotation. So it's more like an exposure to language than it is actually learning a world language. And that was a downgrade from what you had prior in the, you know, generation before that, which was actually world language in all the levels, going from the elementary all the way through the high school. So, you know, these are just some examples of when you had less than a maintenance budget at that 0.55 or something, you know, over a span of time, that has a residual negative effect over the programming, and usually hits general ed population students the most. And if you look at it over a span of many years, you probably had about $5 million over a span of seven to 10 years that, you know, were kind of eroded away, and that's why you see those, those differences. You can also do schedule, robustness of a schedule. You can see how the middle school schedule, say 10 years ago, 10 years ago, was a broader, larger, richer schedule, and it's been reduced to fewer periods with fewer offerings and fewer structures to support, and that's usually general ed, because especially it's mandatory. So that's generally where it is.
All right, I would like to.
Yes, I just, so I'm just, you know, we're, we're using words like detriment and art and music and hearing all that, but what I'd really like to see, and I brought this up at one of our budget meetings, is to look at our pensions. And I think Dr. Willard has reached out to Lisa. I think that that's something that with the current state of the economy, inflation, market discount rates, I'm hoping that we can find some savings in the pension. And I believe they're going to look into maybe having the actuary look at that again because I don't think it was looked at. So Lisa, can you give an update on that?
Well, actually, the town doesn't really have a pension. We have a defined contribution plan, which has worked out phenomenally in our benefit for having that. Because a defined benefit plan, which can really have a major impact on a community, has the, the whole impact of the stock market and how things are invested. And there's a risk where then the town would have to pay more money in, if, or the Board of Education, if the market fluctuated and you didn't have your actuarial amount calculated that you have to contribute, right? So with those types of plans, they're very, they can have a significant impact on the town. We do not have that type of plan. What we have is a defined contribution plan, which is a negotiated rate of percentage that is based off of the salary. It's a set percentage for everybody in, in the trust plan. And the risk is on the employee, not, not the community. So the employee gets their contributions to plan, there's certain vested requirements to be working here for a while, things like that. But they decide on what stock they're putting it in, or what bonds, or what.
Oh, so it's really a 401K or 403.
It's very, it's a 401A. So really to, to look at, there's really no actuarial analysis there. We've, we've done things, I've done things to work with our provider, which is Mission Square now, it's the ICMA, whereas there, there's charges that hit the employees. And those, those fees, God bless you.
Thank you.
Can take an impact on the employees' earnings in that fund. And what I did was I went and negotiated with them to get us a no-fee rate so that there was more money in the employees' pockets.
Okay. So it's really not a tension.
It's not that type of thing.
Okay. So I want to call it something else in the budget, but, all right. All right, well, I'm glad then we've got clarification on that.
Yeah.
So it's really just, this is our contribution to the employees' retirement account, similar to a 401K or 403.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. So unfortunately, then, we're not going to have any. You're calling it golden ticket. I know. So, yeah, I thought, I thought we know.
But I do want to go back to her question. It was geared towards the student space. And so in terms of, you know, I did talk to communications, we're, we're going to start trying to advocate for some of the state on these mandates because it really is a huge amount of money. So if we can start getting some of that in from the state, we'd be, I should be looking at you.
I've literally been asking for this for six years from you guys. Six years I've been asking for this.
So again, if I understand it correctly, then from what Dr. Willard said, if a 3.3% budget increase is not approved, that the impact is with general education services, like our social studies, things like that?
Usually deep impacts end up impacting those areas. Like, yes, it's a general ed, general ed areas, yes.
All right. And that, I mean, you, I know you're talking about usually is, is how things typically happen, and I, I guess I'm very specifically asking about this budget.
Yeah, there, you know, obviously, if we go back to our beautiful two pager, the, the big portion of.
Yeah.
And when you have, if there are severe reductions, you can't get that from pencils and paper. And you can't get that from, you know, state. You can really only get to, to big numbers, especially with the due diligence that the board has done, you know, by going to personnel. And those personnel do tend to be, you know, the general education impact personnel. Now, for instance, to, to jump to something that has been a question, you know, in the pandemic, there were some vacant positions. Most of those positions are one-to-one, people that work with special, students of special education, we've got to get those replaced in order to be in compliance. And we're working very hard to stay in compliance now. But, you know, and, you know, individual jobs like that would not add up to much in an overall span of time. So, you know, deep cuts will, will most typically, and in this case, would be those kinds of positions, it would be those social studies positions, you know, the math positions, the intervention positions.
Are there concerns that?
That the board would have to talk about them.
Sure. Yeah. Are there concerns that reductions in general education services could result in increased costs down the road to the district?
Well, you know, they, they, they both increase costs and have lost opportunity. You know, generally, we are in, we are really, people don't, I think, recognize this because we're in the eye of the storm, but public schools in a local town are in a fight of their life. They are in a fight of their life right now. If you look at what is happening in the state, you know, if we don't create models that have, you know, competitive systems with these magazine charters, there's a driving force right now to have the funding shifted from that direction. And you're already shortchanged in a number of ways. So when we do lose positions, that would be the ones we're talking about, that deeply impacts our ability to support the pathways and lighthouse projects. Your enrollment is not declining at this point anymore. With the span of the next, you know, couple of years, you may fluctuate by 60. Your enrollment is increasing. And there's a data sheet in the Q and A on that, that is projected to, to increase. And so, you know, Talon is in a, is in a, you're a strong, robust town. There are some major challenges to the individual school systems in towns like Talon. And that if you take those hits, that what happens is the attrition grows. It's like a cascading domino effect. You're unable to provide the same kinds of things, or at least even look like you can. And, you know, then more and more of the attrition occurs. And you're in great danger of a lot of attrition over the next few years if we don't maintain the programming that we have. And that's, those are the kinds of places that take the hit. That social studies teacher, that math person, you know. Even places like facilities, you save a tremendous amount of money by having, if you make the investments in the 0.6, you will save more, way more than that by, you know, keeping these individuals, you know, here and working the way they are. Because over time, they get experience and certifications. You lose people, you lose those things, those movies coming in, they'll have that stuff. That happened over decades of time. So, you know, it may look like, hey, why can't, you know, why can't we just chop that 0.6? Why can't we just? That has a residual effect. That affects whether that person can be around. That person at a 0.5 could make, I don't want to say, way more on their own, you know, subcontracting themselves out with the skills that you paid to give them. So it would be great to keep them. So that's the kind of thing that, you know, chopping here and there can have magnifying effects on, on attrition, on loss of what you can do for yourself, cost you more on the programming that makes you competitive against magazines, charters, you know, and on possible type activities.
Okay, so you gave us a lot of information right there. I just want to go back to the original question, which is, do you expect a negative impact on general education services to cost the district more money in future years?
Yes, I mean, I do.
Thank you. I have two more, but oh, hold on.
Yeah, so I've seen it, I've answered time and I've, you know.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, no.
First of all, Dr., I thank you for your, for your time, 101. You very much, Eddie, gave me a lot of information, which I never knew about the system. I thank you for your time. The only one question I have that 2021 COVID pandemic, whatever you want to call is the, the system was shut down for a few months. And we still have a budget, we still have money. I'm pretty sure that 2020, we should have quite a bit of money left over, 2020, 2021. And right now, we are talking about another increase of 3%, which is, I would say, I'm okay because the inflation, everything else, but still, there's got to be somewhere, there's got to be a lot of money left over. Would love to know.
Yeah, I mean, I, because we do have a page on the leftover money, where, I'm sure she has a tab.
I have a tab. So I'm, I'm trying to remember. I don't have 2020s.
So I'm trying to remember, I don't have 2020s, I don't think. But I believe in 2020, and Dr. Willett, if you remember.
There's a lot of things, transportation utility and the management institutions.
Yes, so the money left over from fiscal year 2020, some of it went to pre-investments for that year. Some of it went to fund the COVID relief fund. And another chunk went to fund the education reserve fund. So, so that's, you know, so kind of, I guess, so the COVID relief fund, we've talked about a ton. So that money, I would say, is almost kind of separate now. Need to bring that up anymore. But the, and then in 2021, we had the money left over. Some of it went to pre-investments again, and some of it went to the education reserve fund again. So that's kind of the fund that we're talking about here, that we're going to take money out of. So we have the money that we put in. We are planning on using some of the savings that we realized in previous years. And the rest of the money went for the pre-investments over the last couple of years. Which, that was what I was talking about when I said the $150,000 that we pre-invested, that we have built back into this budget. So does that answer your question?
No, kind of, but. I was thinking that there's got to be a little bit more money.
More money.
Well, I can give you an example of how the slide works, right? And this can be tricky. You know, any trend right now is a very wonderful endeavor, but also has some perils in it. In that you've got four years that are extremely atypical, really kind of anomaly years that throw off any kind of typical track, right? You have the two COVID years, and you have two state budget years, right? So let's take the most recent year though, because I think what you're asking is. When money was, you know, remaining at the end of the year for, because of COVID or the pandemic. Where did that money go and how was it used? I think is a general question that you're asking. So during the pandemic, I'm going to just try to answer that one in the most recent span of time. But we can go back, we can go all the way back to 11, 12 if you want, kind of, I can give you that. So, but, you know, essentially. In the COVID year last year, buses weren't running, we had all kinds of quarantines, kids were out of school. You know, ins, out, in and out, remote learning for spans of time. And so when those buses weren't running, we went back to the bus company and said, we need to recoup that money for a student to, an honorable job. They didn't try to fleece us. We made agreements, money came back, and that's all part of the CRF one pager that I posted. It's also posted up here, talked about how those funds kind of were not utilized for student services. The thing about it is that, as you might imagine, in any school year, if you're not utilizing funds under 10 to 22 that were dedicated to student services. Those student services did not happen, those students' education suffered, and most certainly it did. And you're not alone in Tolland, but that, that across the entire state, the state of Connecticut released data from last year that said. The LA was kind of okay, but math took major hits across the entire state, likely across the entire country. So kids did not learn as much as they needed to learn. And that was largely because of the pandemic, and largely the services were not rendered, okay? But at the end, you know, we don't have the benefit of a multi-year budgets, Board of Ed budgets. End, they begin and end at a fixed point in time. The town council had great leadership and provided a, you know, with the board, came to an understanding that there was a CRF, the Foreign Affairs Relief Fund, so that you could transcend that limitation. There were funds that, because those services were not rendered in a private year, they could then be rendered to help children. Help with that learning loss, help with those things that happened that they did not get. And that, a beautiful example of that is the conversation we recently had where now, these kids will get summer school. They will get what we call extended school year to help build the skills and the time that they lost when they were unable to attend school, really. And they were trying to do it from home while everybody at home was running around, the dog was biting them. Dad and mom were trying to figure out what to do, and you know, that just did not have the same quality and access and basic. So, you know, those funds that were unable to be utilized, were being, are being utilized on that. For quarantines, the kids that during this year were stuck in and out of school for mandatory quarantines. We had associate educators, again, great leadership of the board and the council for the dollars that, you know, were there. Unable to be used in the last fiscal year. Transcended that limitation of time and were able to be used for associate educators that directly contacted and acted as an interface between the families. We had upwards of massive quarantines at the beginning of the year, lots of kids out, many kids at home that needed help. And the parents couldn't, you know, couldn't really manage it because they were trying to do jobs. So the AE really was a crucial part, and that was able to be funded because of that money that went from the previous year. So, you know, that's really how that works. It was unable to be used in that year, and it was able to be used this year and into the summer to help those kids get back up to speed on what they lost in the previous year, and it could not be spent because it could not render the service. So that's an example of the most recent year. Those dollars will wash, because they're going to be used completely for summer school, completely for the AEs, and those dollars wash and be gone. If the school district had a two-year budget, or had an ERF robust enough to be able to have those funds have been transferred into the ERF. That wouldn't have even been necessary. So those structures exist to help make those kinds of things possible. And again, kudos to the council and board for making that possible. But that's an example, that those dollars are gone, or will be as of the end of the summer.
Sammy, can I, can I pivot off that? I think one of the questions that Sammy's trying to get at is, how much money was saved when the district had to shut down for COVID? Is that a lot of money, is it a little money, like what's the magnitude?
So that's CRF for last year.
Yeah.
That CRF was, was transferred over 796,000 to be used, to be split into ERFs, CRF. And then that CRF is being used for the summer school, only associate educators. The ERF is being used for the one-to-one technology.
So about 800,000?
Supposed to be.
That's, that's.
That's the most recent, yeah, if I'm remembering correctly, as part of the CRF. That is actually listed on the site there, the one pager was listed.
But at the same time, you're taking about 300 something dollars back for the COVID thing, whatever it is.
Yep, so how did it go into the COVID relief fund to help students who, with summer school, basically?
It's probably one, it's a one, two from our meeting.
Oh, it's not the last member.
The last thing, I would say that. Last few years, the whole system was working as. As you, I would say as usual, whatever, this whole system was working. So now, like, whatever the money we left over, why? You'll be needing for. The things what we were doing before. Does it make sense what I'm?
I think Sammy, you're asking great questions. It's my, I just, I'm not, I'm thick this evening, without the caffeine, I'm not processing well. But I am listening, so. You know, where, where are the dollars that were not spent?
That you're asking in the pandemic?
Kind of. So, you know. The pandemic hit a whole country hard. There were services that couldn't be given to the kids. When, when you say that, you know, the system was still running, that's true. But the quality of what the system was able to provide was much lower, because kids were at home and they weren't in classrooms. And so the system still spent money on personnel, you know, although people did leave. So there was some money that wasn't spent there. Because they didn't want to teach kids in an environment they thought they could maybe get sick in, or could have had a raise during the pandemic. And the government handed out some dollars, people felt like this isn't worth it for a while, I'm going to take it.
You're pretty sure that you were paying, the salary was paid and everything, all the benefits was paid, but.
But whatever was recouped at the end of a budget year gets rolled to the town. And the town then makes a decision about what it wants to do. Because there were services that could not be rendered, the town and the board created the CRF fund. And was able to then transcend that time limit of a one-year budget and use those dollars to serve these children in the summer, in the ESY program, and things that they never would have had otherwise, and will probably not have in the future. And that was meant to try to help provide the education and support because of the time they lost before. So those dollars are being spent on children. Kudos to the town council for deciding to be able to do that and give those dollars to those children who needed it. So that, those dollars are washing out. From, said, using this year as an example, those dollars that rolled, that were saved are being spent on children, which is the right thing in my opinion. And so they're zeroing out pretty much. There isn't any dollars left after that, from that rule.
Someone just making me a round with the pandemic, just see if.
I'd like to contribute to answering Sammy's question. I don't know if this simplifies things. So in 2020, at the end, when we had money left, that was really strictly because things just weren't running the way they should. So we did a 30, 40, 30 split. And that was the CRF, the COVID relief fund, the ERF, the educational reserve. And then we gave the other 30% back to the town. So this year, you know, wrapping up, if there's, if there's money left, it's really defining efficiencies. It's not that we don't use it. It's that we found efficiencies in the year.
Yeah, that's what that.
But I do, I do recognize what you, what you see, because I sometimes see the same thing, and I see thread. I'm like, why do we have all this money left? You know, we are not going to explain this, but there's certain things that happen throughout the year. But in that one year, that's what happened. And we knew we had to recognize those efficiencies because the kids weren't in school. Does that make sense? Or did I completely contribute more?
But those are the last two, yeah, 30, 40, 30, and then it's enough.
All right, I'll reply.
I should really just try to explain where the funds ended up at the end of the year, and how it was split and divided. And I mean, it is something that you guys are just jumping in and, you know, we've been kind of through this process, so it is confusing. But I think the best explanation was from her, what, how do those funds get divided in what categories? And like I said, I know, like, it's, the budget process has a lot of questions. And there's a lot of information to take in, and it's really hard sometimes to just see what that bottom line is and how the funds move. But all the funds are accounted for of how they go to the different things, sort of. So that kind of helps you that split.
I'm getting, I'm getting quite a bit of answers, the right ways, like, the only thing is keep popping up that. The, the budget for a week is about what? Like now, as you, as you guys are proposing about 42. Numbers are, if the school systems are open about, what, 38 weeks, 39 weeks? I mean, you're talking about a million dollars for a week, one week?
Well, in the schools, but you still have maintenance costs for kinds of the school closed. But you have the salaries, you know, you know what I'm saying?
I'm just saying roughly about a million dollars, roughly about a million dollars for a week. And then the school shut down for, let's say, about three weeks, four weeks. For the 2020 and then whatever, it's got to be, there's got to be some millions dollar, not 100,000 dollars.
It wasn't 100,000, it was.
That's, that's the only question, is keep, but in here, keep popping up that.
We still have salaries to pay, we still have to keep things like running. So you still, you know, just because you're shut down doesn't mean that you're not paying teachers to do remote school. You still have additional costs now with that. Yes, we saved on the buses because our students weren't going on the bus. But there's still those additional payments. I mean, we still had, I think, custodians, we did not have to. But we did have to pay money for the food services, which are technically kind of on their own. But we had to step in and help pay for them because we weren't serving lunches. So we didn't have any income coming in selling the cookies that we could technically have. So you still have expenses that need to come out of there. So you can't just say, well, it costs a thousand, a million dollars to run. Because you still are dividing in all the operational fees that need to be coming out of that expense, that are still going out. And you're still paying. So we were able to save on what that one page represented.
Okay, last question, last question, I'm asking as a resident of Town of Talon. Not as a. My question is, last two years or three years. The Town of Talon. Their income or their revenue didn't, didn't go up. And every department of Town of Talon, even though. Board of Education, Fire Department, or anybody else. I mean, money, money, money. My department is made, made. When the Town of Talon is going to get that money from? Unless if they put a bond, unless if they borrow the money. And my question is like, how far they can go? And how, how they're going to pay for it in future? For the UK, is going to pay for that 2021 into 2030? How, how far we're going to go? Because every year is like a couple of million dollars up and up. So how, I do, I don't, I just don't get it, I don't work that way. If I don't have it, I don't spend it. And as it says, and you guys are talking about in millions, not in thousands, you're talking about millions. And that how the town is going to get it? How the town is going to get that money to give it to you in silver platter? As a, as a taxpayer, that's what I'm asking, as a taxpayer. How far as a taxpayer I can go?
I'm actually.
I mean, I know that, I, I know.
So, it's kind of a philosophical question in a way. So when I create this budget or work up, I'm creating it with my eight other board members, Dr. Willett. I never want to look at what I produce as something I'm entitled to receive. As a board member, it's my job to create a budget that I believe supports the schools. And, and my, in a fiscally responsible way, which I believe I've tried to do. There are some things that drive that number up that are not avoidable, but I believe that are very important investments.
No, I'm not, that's not my question. That might not, that's not my question. Whatever, my question is, as a taxpayer. You guys are doing it.
Yeah.
What do you think that Lisa's going to get the money from? That's my question, is, you know, how far Lisa? And go and give it to you in silver platter, whatever you ask, 3% or 4% or 2%? Every single department is three, three main departments over here. And how far she can go and borrow that money? And then as a taxpayer. When I'm going to be paying that money to you? And obviously, every year that you guys are coming back to is more and more. I know, I know it's efficient, everything is there. But I'm just, as a taxpayer, I'm asking how far. How far I can go, how far I can afford it to live in Town of Talon? Or before XYZ can move to South Carolina instead of getting a retirement and move over there? But that's, it's a genuine question, it's not something that I'm coming towards your budget, I'm not. So don't depend that.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that, because as I said, I'm okay with that 3% because of inflation, everything else. How far the inflation is going to go? But even though with that, I'm just saying that. My question, I'm going to repeat it again, as a taxpayer. How far, how far she can go and borrow that money? And when should we be paying that money? That's the, that's the only question, I'm not asking about the budget. I'm not asking anything else, I'm just talking about the money.
So I think, I think you might be being a little bit off track. I do appreciate your question, Sammy, so I think you really should be about the budget. So when you're asking about revenues, asking about long-term bonding and borrowing, it's really more of a one-on-one conversation. So that would kind of help give you a better picture.
It's part of it, but to me, it's like, it's part of the, part of the, part of we are talking about, we're talking about the money. Also, I'm not trying to defend the budget, I'm not talking about, I'm just, as a taxpayer, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah.
I also think it's also a very fascinating question. Because you still have mill rates, you still have grants for states, but that's, once again, not on a personal financial level. I mean, you asked a question that I don't know that you're going to be able to just get an answer to. You know, but at the end of the day, I don't know what your financial situation is, I don't know what your financial situation is. I don't know. I don't know what they do for work. I don't know what they, you know, I don't, I don't, not in their house to do their budget to know where their funds go. So I cannot sit there and say, well, this is how you're going to pay for it because their taxes are due in January, July. So how do you go to the tax office and make that payment? I can't answer that for other people, but I can't tell you.
I'm using Lisa's name. Yeah, how, how far she is going to go? That's what I'm talking about there, Lisa. I'm not talking about you. I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about Lisa. How far she is going to go get that bond or money or loan? And obviously next year? Board of Education, Fire Department, everybody is going to come up again and ask for two percent or one percent increase on their budget. It could be inflation, it could be whatever reason it could be needed, a new ambulance or fire truck or whatever. I'm just saying that. So it's like how that money is keep adding up and just keep adding up. And when she is going to pay that today money toward? I'm just, I know it's a, kind of hard question, but it's like.
So the beautiful thing about this is you get to help decide because the council votes first. What I would offer to you is this, that the Board of Ed budgets over the last few years, the increases have been two percent, point one percent, point eight four percent, point seven eight percent, point zero. Then there was two point seven, two point nine at the three and then followed, you know, all the way back old one. So you had three years of about two to threes in this Board of Ed budget for increases. But most of these years, you know, there was a lot of due diligence done throughout the process. The job of the councils to decide what the town can afford. The Board of Ed is supposed to offer up a budget that sustains the needs of the children. And somewhere in that dynamic of the Beautiful American Process comes a budget that is presented a referendum for people to decide. If a budget is not sufficient to support the school systems, the people like me who have three children in Ellington, if I don't find that Ellington is supporting the interests that I have for my children, I will leave. I'm willing to drive a Honda Pilot that has under ninety-five thousand miles on it, you know, Hyundai's, whatever, because I want to make sure Ellington's budget passes and I have never voted down an Ellington budget. Because I believe in supporting education and I don't think what they've asked for is unreasonable. They asked for three points this year, by the way. So, you know, the point is that, you know, it's about what you're willing and you are able to spend. And that has to be a balancing act through all the needs that you're going through right now. We have a role in doing that. But the balance is that if the budgets don't sustain the things that people are interested in living in this town for, they'll leave. And the other piece is you want to make sure the people that are living in the town don't get so excessively overwhelmed that they can't stay. And that is a very delicate balance, but I can't come to your store, but you know.
I, I did mention that the town did not have, that town did not increase their revenue. Town wasn't making about the same, same money. That's, that's what I'm, it's just. Town didn't increase any, uh, any more revenue or any more income. There's no new business in Town of Talent. It's about the same housing, not same business or whatever. Same, it's same revenue that the town is doing it, twenty twenty one, twenty two. And nothing, nothing similar.
So Sammy, I think we're a little bit off topic. We really got to focus on the Board of Ed, but we can't. We can have those discussions. We have meetings coming up in March that are more about the question, the picture about revenue. But that's really a question for Lisa. If you want to make sure we're kind of hitting my.
Right.
So I'm sure on your counselors.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be just. Oh, thank you for talking. Definitely.
Yeah, I know, and I, I remember it in full by Christine and Ashley, they might probably both have spent, so. I want to make sure everybody gets an echo on our time last question, so I try to keep my way down. So it comes to you to check and then it comes to Reagan and then I'll jump over.
Yeah, I know. So I've been following the board for a while, you know, the past few years and definitely this year, like we, you guys did an excellent job. You guys worked together. Who was not there, but he saw one of them that we. I would have never passed a one point nine four, but three point one three, I think is an investment for our community. I love Sammy's questions. He challenges.
I'm okay with that, with the, with the, whatever shit, whatever they're proposing is inflation or anything. I'm okay with that.
I understand.
But I'm just talking about a, as a.
So it's going to change anything. I just want to make sure Tommy gets her.
No, I know. I was just going to say, I think he asks great questions and it makes you think differently and I love that. Earlier, I heard words like transparency and stuff. I think the Board of Education, the town do work well together. I know everybody's always like, what are they doing behind closed doors? But I mean, I get nervous when we hear words like that. But I know there's a lot of background to leftover budgets as we call them. There's the old backs years ago and there's COVID that happened. So I think unfortunately, it always looks like the Board of Education, excuse me, has a extra money. And it's just not true. I have a spreadsheet. We've lost a lot of positions over the years. People don't talk about that. People talk about class sizes. Education is different than it was years ago. When I went to school, special education costs, like you say, they're one of the big areas, right? Special ed, bush transportation. I hate when we start talking about, it sounds like we're putting numbers on students and we shouldn't be doing that. I do have a couple of questions and actually. My, I'm really, mine's horrible. What is the morale in our school system right now? It's been a rough few years. We can talk about our staff, I don't know.
I mean, that would be better for Dr. Willett because he's been in the school system now. I can tell you a few years ago, when I was there, he would like to have more of that touch base of what's actually happening. Or Jen would, PTO stuff, she would be able to answer that as well. That's good job to stop.
I mean, I will say, I've, I've been in school a lot over the last nine years. I find, I always find the conversation that our enrollment is going down, our class sizes are. I, I don't know where that is. I, I see these class sizes and especially, you know, maybe we've had some lower class sizes in kindergarten, but I think it's also about what you consider inappropriate class size or not. And I think we've looked at studies over the years that show that, you know, it's really between the sixteen and eighteen range where children are getting the most support. We're over twenty in all of our, pretty much all of our classes, certainly third up. Again, like Ms. Howard Bender said, I have children currently in middle school and high school. Their classes are large. Their classes are up to twenty six. And the classes that my children struggle with are the classes that have high numbers of students. We, you know, we have a seventh grade class that since kindergarten, you've had to move a teacher every year to accommodate the numbers in that class. That class is going into high school soon. I can say that I have never seen a, a classroom or anything where they're, we're looking at being understaffed. We're absolutely not. And right now, when we're in the position that we are, we have the loss of learning, not to mention the mental health that we really need to focus on. It's not the time to have higher class sizes or to take staff away. It's exactly the opposite. We need, we need smaller class sizes. Think of, again, you know, Dr. Willett brought up a point of, you know, the children who are right on the cusp and could be, you know, moved over to special ed. Those children need teacher attention. They need classroom air support. They don't need to be in large classroom sizes where they can't have one-on-one time with their teachers, time with their peers. They've lost that these last couple of years. We need to bring that back, especially in the middle school and high school. We added a counselor. That's great. We have this, we're continuing these skills for adolescents. That's great. You know, we, we should be talking about even more things. We should be adding the social workers to school. We should be adding more programs and services. But we're doing what we can right now. And like Dr. Wilson, I mean, think about even, you know, the, the other things we've lost. I mean, we used to have guide, more guidance, you know, coming into classrooms, especially for. Getting these children ready to go into middle school, which are extremely difficult years. You know, and when we spoke with our administrators during our budget session, they all talked about needing help in the, you know, social emotional health arena. So I, I don't, I don't know if I helped answer your question at all, but I definitely think that our budget supports bringing in more staff for things like academics and for things like social emotional health. I think our budget supports, even though we have to turn to the ERF technology. I think that the pandemic pointed out a lot of our shortcomings. And I think that we need to not only recruit, but we need to build and we need our children to be in a place where they're more competitive. It's only getting more and more competitive. They only need more and more things going to colleges. I agree with Dr. Willett. I think that a lot of people are leaving public education to go for that more specialized education, lack of better word. I think that this budget helps us take a step forward.
But still, I guess, like I, I'm gradient of a step, I guess, how are they, are they beyond overwhelmed and not being supported?
I think the pandemic hurt everyone in all sectors. Most of, there's a lot of teachers who want to leave. That's, that's a, that's a mission why it's struggled. The job that, uh, that educator has has grown massively. The expectations come massively. And I know that, that that is true of all sectors. It's just, so you're asking specifically about education. I think many of them feel very strained. And, uh, you know, like, they're very good people. We have high-quality teachers here who are on work every day to try to be sure that, that, you know, they're served. The children are our first priority and the staff is obviously my, you know, that primary importance thereafter. And I try to do everything I can to keep people sustained, you know? And that's for in service of town to do that because you've got great people here. You want to keep them here to serve the children, which is the first priority.
Yeah, I think actually. I don't know if you guys raised for a question or if you want to respond.
So I, I love your questions, but I am going to respectfully ask that we stick to agenda and core and keep the questions specific to budget. You know, I, I can appreciate that our staff is overworked and I'm sure everybody is feeling a low sense of morale and whatever in the theater. And at the same time, I think it's a lot of questions.
So let me pivot to an education question that Ms. Galloch had, had talked about in Walmart. So twenty one, twenty two, from twenty one, twenty two to twenty thirty one, thirty two, you're going from, uh, you're going up about two hundred kids from nine hundred thirty five, pre K five to about one thousand, one hundred and twenty nine. So your enrollment is on the, on the rise at this point. So any conversation about, your, your enrollment now has plateaued and will be on the rise. That's what's projected.
Can you just provide another?
Though, shows that it goes down for the next like five years before it starts to go down.
The differential is sixty probably within that time and then you increase by two hundred by, you know, Mezdeq's projections to thirty two.
And if we have a updated enrollment sheet of the county administrators, when I just was talking to Johnson, it was four students that month that were buying houses that were.
Some really strange dynamics.
And that was just for drove kids. That's not including siblings that are other schools. And he said, we have so many of these kids. And they were so excited about it and, you know, it's one of these conversations that our enrollments are actually going up.
Yeah, I mean, that, and that's, that's, that is happening, which is good. It's a good news thing. So to pivot that into an educational piece, you're staffed the way you need to be staffed at the moment, but you will be needing to look at that in future. You're going to, you know, need to adjust to those subjects that are coming in and that spans the trajectory. I mean, that's good sign. That's actually a very good sign.
One of the other questions very good ask. She's comfortable and you know, you've been working extremely hard, but. Great. But what is the estimate of this year, this fiscal year's budget is going to end up? Is it going to end with overages that has been the last few years for several reasons? Or is it going to be pretty close to the number that you budgeted?
I think it's pretty close to what we budgeted. Um, we're still waiting for some, was it our excess cost?
Yeah.
Oh, if we're going to end over, under budget rather, by a lot this year. And I'm thinking, no.
Very tricky year, you know, where we have some pandemic-related educational impacts, students, uh, different exceptionally programming of our services that at a level that we haven't seen in a long, long, long time. And that is creating a situation where we will balance out with excess costs and it's coming from the state that we expect to come in this month and then in May. But I do not think we will be in a position to be, and with these strange pandemic years, you say budget years, those anomalies that you, you probably are not going to be seeing a lot of that in the future.
Thank you, Sharon.
Florida, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, my question involves salary. And I understand that the biggest impact on an increase are contracted salaries, right? And my question is, are there any circumstances where somebody who was under or receiving a contracted salary would get more than what a contract calls for?
Are there any circumstances that degree change line?
So, you know, um, so in degree changes, to give an example of such a thing, the, the E H gave you about six thousand dollars if you go from, if you know, there's about fifteen steps. And if you're, I'm just going to guess because if this is street, street's not funny. Let's say you're in the eleven-year, eleven-step, you go from a master's to a six-year and maybe six thousand, seven thousand more to get. But if you go from a bachelor's to a master's in something like fourteen to fifteen steps, thirty-two thousand dollars. So there are things that are contractual increases, but then there are also leaps up that people can take when they do degree changes or take course for the chapter inverse for. Those degree changes can be in chunks of six to eight thousand to, we had one that's ten thousand dollars that just got handed in for next year. That's just one person, one degree change was ten thousand dollars, you know, chump off. So that.
These are things that, that people can work toward and then once they achieve these degrees, they, they can expect.
They're going to do it different. Yeah. So if you think of it as these tiers, they then move over to the right tier and they jump up to whatever that salary level is under that tier. And that's, you know, six-year masters and E A right now.
I understand that. Uh, I guess really what I'm getting at, are there any circumstances where, where a decision would be made to give somebody the signs of the degree steps that people can achieve? Are there any circumstances where somebody may get a raise because maybe their performance is better than others? Or maybe some of their peers. Are there any circumstances like that or is everything based on the contract itself?
You know, and most of it's all contract itself. For individual contract employees, you can do a merit, there's a merit piece where, you know, if they do all their goals, they hit all their goals and all their targets. Whereas someone who did not decide to do the full, the full goal piece, because some individual contract people don't have to do that, which I, you know, I find if they go ahead and do actually set goals, they're much more productive and usually achieve more for the district. If they hit all their goals and they do, uh, the highest level of performance, they have to hit these three indicators. They can make a little bit more, like a percentage more. So someone might get two, the others would get three if they went through the whole, what's called ICEE process. So the ICEE process means a perfect performance evaluation. All the goals were hit and all targets were matched and all onsite informal and formal evaluations with the highest level. And so if somebody hits all of those, then they get a little bit more, which is an incentive to do things. But when they do, they create special projects they have to achieve by the end of the year. They typically do a lot more for the district. That's not a lot of people though. It's a very small, it's a comparatively small number. Your biggest chunks are the bargaining.
Okay. So there's no circumstances where somebody can just arbitrarily give them more than what the contract calls for? Is that correct?
But no, not really. I'm talking, kind of, no, you cannot, no, you cannot arbitrarily, no. It would be stipends, it would be, uh, the degree changes, it would be, you know, no one goes beyond contract.
Okay. So there's definitions, there's goals, definitions, degrees that people can achieve and that's, that would lead to.
For the bargaining, yes. Yeah. And for individual contracts, it's not ICEE.
Very good.
Thank you, Sharon. We're coming around. That's the point you show. Well, let's, let's go and yield the council move our first. I'll have both your hands up at one point. I'll pick my way around.
Oh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let you go. This might turn into something.
I have quite a few questions. I'm going to try to keep them concise in the essence of time and that we can do the answers concisely and that'd be appreciated. So I'm looking through, the majority of my questions are coming from the board Q and A because you guys asked a lot of questions and I just have some follow-up stuff. So first one is line five sixty-four. These are the out-of-district magnets and chargers. In there, the assumption of the budget is that there's a three percent increase. This item has consistently since two thousand and fourteen been underspent. I'm wondering what is driving the assumption of the three percent? And because it looks like the in, every year is around that kind of a number. So I'm wondering what is driving the three percent, if anything definitive on that or if it's just a assumption? is around that kind of a number. So I'm wondering what is driving the three percent? Do we have anything definitive on that or if it's just a assumption?
The kid, the, it's based on current people and the programming that they're anticipating.
Well, I understand that part.
So it's based on the current program, the, what the kids are going to be projected to need. So we had seven out placements that came in the last two months. That impact. The five sixty four is tuition's, it's a, you know, a series of tuition programs. And that would, that would probably be falling into the five sixty four, five sixty, five sixty one and five sixty four mixed and merged a little differently in the last few years. So it's not really a comparative statistic from year to year, but taken as a group. You know, an example would be, we do cost avoidance programs. So if we can do a cost avoidance program that avoids us from having to spend some of those funds, we've achieved that differential. And so we, we endeavor to achieve the differential. The JAPD budget based on what the program, actual program needs for those kids that you know, you have are. If you fail to do any cost avoidance measures or if something doesn't work out the way you thought, money has to be available for those programs for those kids based on the, you know, the programming that they have. Special ed is always tricky. But to give you an example of how you can get caught on the back end of that, this year, despite all of those efforts, we now have about six or seven in a period of two months that we didn't really anticipate. That's why we are in a negative budget situation right now. We'll have to rely on the excess costs coming in and then the one in May. And we have the E R F specified for special ed for that purpose. So you can't really cross compare five sixty, five sixty one and five sixty four of the years. There was some mixing of them. But the basic answer to that is your budget for what you know you're going to need for those kids in the future, based on what you have right now and which, you know, we know are coming. And then you look to do cost avoidance measures to try to avoid that if you possibly can. And this district has done an amazing job. You have almost thirty kids in the LEAP program. So thirty kids, you know, thirty kids is a massive cost avoidance measure. That's partially why you probably see some things being different from two years.
I specifically just want to know what the three percent is based on.
It's based on the projections of the kids for the special programming.
We just talked about this line last night actually. And I believe Dr. Willie just said because we are already over budget for this current year. And it's because we had kids go to, if kids go to magnets and charters, they, some have done it mid year.
That, yeah, and that does happen mid year. That's what's happening right now.
Just so I know, we've already gone over budget this year and then accordingly for next year.
Bar question five. There was talk of moving paraprofessionals to behavioral staff. And this is more just a question on, on my side here. Are the parents being trained to be behavioral, the behavior positions there? And because I know that's totally different from their pay scale and everything else. And like if there are, do they have to be qualifications to do that? Are they even trained to become behavioral?
So paraprofessionals are part of bargaining unit. And that bargaining unit has kind of an expectation work. You know, as school systems have evolved over the last ten years, we have, there are many things that we have to do. And so typically the, the staffing and talking about the E V I Ss are people that are specifically signing up for the job of managing the E B. In, in a way that requires a lot of things that not everybody is, you know, is interested in doing or, or is, it's not their expectation for it. So, you know, in certain positions and places, the E V I Ss have been the people that need to go in and they're at a market rate.
Some parents are being trained to, in changing jobs.
This is one of my questions. You know, they get parapositions. The position got transferred over to be A V I S positions. I don't believe hired, well, they won't be hired this year. They're not. Yes. So they're not the same people who will be doing one position to the other. And the five, I think it was five parapositions were removed from the paraline in the budget, which offset the increase in A V I S salaries.
Which is part of the.
Okay. Just for, I asked teacher at the beginning of the evening, writing back, I'm going to spell out what those are, like what they stand for.
Oh.
Like A D A. Sorry, I was thinking they say something.
No, you're not. I'm just saying for everybody to know what.
It's the associate behavioral intervention.
It might be good for, for the clerk to be able to spell it out. So thank you for catching that. I forgot to break that in the beginning.
This is professional. She means that.
I know. Okay. Board question ten. There was something on here, Rockburn electric repairs for elevated or difficult exterior lighting repairs description, twenty five hundred dollars. If the articulated lift, which is in the capital budget plans for this year, is there, are you still anticipating having to pay outside contracting to do what the eighty thousand dollar lift is supposed to?
Is not being in the capital budget. We just, we talked about that. We, the board had actually put that in the following year because we weren't a hundred percent sure. We were still kind of talking about possible shared equipment with the town. So we would need that in here this year. Because we are not getting enough security lift. And Lisa and I talked about that briefly. So I think we still need to revisit that.
Because it's in our capital plan as this year, correct? So, yeah, but I think our capital plan, like if Lisa puts it in the capital plan for this year, then it would be purchased this year, I think, right?
Well, somebody tells me different. So I was not, I didn't get the response that I sent regarding your questions on the capital for me, for everybody.
About, I know I sent you an email. You just replied to me that you got my email. I didn't.
I, I.
Get an update after that.
Yeah, just to clarify, I think there was a question during the capital debt to contract. There was one, you sent things between at a long meeting, you could speak to your public participation. So you said, do you know if the question, right? That's the email Lisa referring to.
Right.
Because you mentioned some of the articles in that email. So I don't know if that, did you have that email sent to you or not?
I explained everything.
Are we not moving back?
I think Lisa's debt plan, she has to do everything, that everything's capital wise, has to be managed through the whole debt plan and everything. So.
That's something that the town council wants to discuss during the budget process to pull out of there.
And I think that's something that I think you expressed that it's not needed for this year, not expected by the board that, you know, we should probably visit that as we look through, if I didn't, we're going to have that readjusted to a different capital one to here.
Absolutely. And no one on this hair is on. If the board, we, I remember this conversation on our capital budget. We had a great conversation about how this board wanted to move forward together with, I mean, we talked about science classrooms and upgrades and, you know, how to move the patrices forward at the high school. So my question is, how does an eighty thousand dollar lift that's on there for twenty twenty four all of a sudden get approved for this year? When the board has.
I think, you know, that's okay. I think part of it is, is the, the budget that you guys put forward in the capital budget is your request. And then Lisa has to go through and manage through our debt plan. Like, we don't do a one for one. Like she has to look at the whole entire debt plan and figure out when things can be purchased, when it's going to be bonded, when it's not going to be bonded. And ultimately, just like the regular budget from the capital perspective, the town council budget besides that, that's like, so I, I think it's, if it's the lift or whatever, there needs to be a conversation between what Lisa has put into the capital plan as what she thinks we can manage with definitely. Because it's all debt.
That, the, the lift was a debt. I used.
C N R.
Yeah, I did use C N R for that, but I was, there was other things. There was a lot of your different assets that in order for me to manage how we pay for it, I had to push out, I had to push through a referendum process that will have to go to, to the public to vote on. I think there was a communication that I had put together that explained it all. And I think it got hung up in my junk mail or something by accident, but the superintendent was going to share it, is going to share it with you. But I apologize that you didn't get that. But immediately after I got your email, I, on a Sunday night, I worked to get everything responded to as to why I did what I did. So I apologize that.
I did think it's something that we wanted to visit because I do not think the board of bed wants that work this year. Yeah, we, we really wanted, yeah, we really wanted to student things. So if we could, I don't know, have another conversation at some point. I've asked before, not today, but before, yeah, over your final budget, I think that.
What I feel like is that they have the original sheet before we made our decisions that we ended up moving things around because.
No, it was done. Yeah, no, it's there. I saw it. It's, it's correct.
Oh.
Yeah, it's what we.
Because the lift was the first thing that you said, push it out.
Yeah, I have the final one that was sent over. So we have quite a few other items in fiscal year twenty three that I think the board placed a greater importance on. So, but, okay, so trying to answer your question, but we need to continue this conversation before the capital budget gets finalized, please.
Okay. Budget question fourteen. This one was more just the, Dr. Willitt, didn't idea, didn't get pushed out to twenty two years old last year? It's not twenty one anymore, it's twenty two now. Pardon? I'm sorry. The, on what, four question, okay, fourteen, idea. Didn't the extension get pushed out to age twenty two now?
Okay.
Okay. Because it says twenty one in here. So.
No, that would be twenty two.
It's being funded through age twenty two, correct? All of the same, it's all in this budget and it's out of the idea grant, correct?
Well, yeah, part, at least in part, yes. But you're right. It does go through age twenty two.
Okay. No, I wasn't going crazy. The next thing.
You know what's interesting is this is probably based out of the state system.
The next one on there was the A R P idea six eleven. On here, the, is this our, is this A R P money? And if so, should it not be in the budget and not be contributing to N B R, but spiked out separately?
It is in the budget. It is a grant. So it is.
It is.
Yeah. This is all additional, specifically in this case for special ed.
Okay. And then the next question I had in that same section now a little bit.
But just as a clarification, it's pandemic related. So like those tutors are specifically to help learning blocks.
It's the, yeah, this is our E S L. So I guess the E S L, my next question was fifteen thousand dollars for field trips in, in, in the summer, in the summer program?
Well, the, they require that E S Y programs have social emotional supports. And they actually list things like field trips as those social supports. So those aren't actually a lot of times travel out. They're, they're, they're like, what do you call it? Staycation type stuff where you invite programming in. Whether, and I'm going to name some things that I've seen done in the past with reptile programs, things like that. And they're supposed to do that because they're supposed to make it not just another two months of school. They're supposed to make it so that the kids want to. So that's, that is an area they want you to.
Okay. So how long is the E S L program and how many?
E S Y.
E S Y, sorry.
It's a series of programming. It's not necessarily directed, but it's like a series of programs that they would probably be using in a staycation model. But again, this is state, you know, this is state funding pandemic related for those kids for that purpose. Not part of.
Okay.
Not part of the operating budget or the.
Uh, but in question sixteen, the associated educators that were hired to handle the quarantine. I thought when we spoke last time, maybe then last year, that these money, these, these positions were being funded through the C R F in that they weren't going to be in the budget and adding to N B R. So are these associated educators part of the N B R number now? And not being accounted for outside of it?
What, I'm sorry, what's N B R?
N B R, the minimum balance, the minimum budget requirement, budget requirement, holy, holy, according to the state, you cannot dictate.
I mean, the A E's are one year, they are one year thing this year. And they are at least in part funded by the C R F. Although I think LEAP had, there's an explanation for what we did in LEAP and that actually saved the district some money with respect to how we did that. Whether you call them an A E or not, we used the common terminology for A E. But we replaced a portfolio of part time half teacher and teacher contract and one other with, you say, that we call them A E. But the A E's that are part of the pandemic are funded by the C R F.
Okay.
This new terminology of A E, we might actually hold on to that term. But what you're talking about in terms of people, yeah, that was C R F funded. That was what we're talking about. This, this position name, once pandemic is over, we actually, this might be a beneficial name for all of them. Just like we have A V I Ss, that type of thing. So it depends.
Okay. Question number nineteen. I think I've asked this before. I don't, I don't know that I've ever really gotten anything to kind of show. But the open choice funds that come in, I think it's like maybe a thousand dollars on a number off the top of my head here. How is that utilized below the budget? Now, that's something that, you know, the grant monies, I know the grant monies go to the board of ed, not to the town. So it doesn't go against the budget from our opening perspective. It's coming directly to you guys. So where in the budget can I look to say the eighty thousand dollars that we're getting from this is reducing this for them?
Well, so, you know, for instance, what we do is we end up using it for services for talent over in, that live in talent. Talent for students who live in Hartford. That can be tutoring services. That can be transportation services. That can be special, special services programming. You know, that's inclusion and special ed related. Usually require, you know, as people that are getting access to do this after hours during the summer. It's services that we can offer to talent students who live in talent, talent students who live in Hartford, who would otherwise not be able to, to offer. And it's at that, in that budget book, we're at that rate of that many kids. And that's the funding level for those kids. So that has a residual beneficial effect for the town.
So is that money that is being spent over and above the budget?
Yes. But it's for services that are for talent kids that live in talent, talent kids that live in Hartford.
I understand that. But I, I remember when we were talking about open choices at the beginning and that the idea was set these dollars were going to be also used to offset the budget.
Well, think of it this way, it's cost avoidance. Because if you weren't doing it with these dollars, you'd be, we'd be asking for budget dollars to do it.
But you just said it was over and above the budget stuff.
But you're still getting these services for it. So let's say we took that away and for some reason that whole thing evaporated. Those talent students that live in talent would be without these services and we would probably be asking for them. So, you know, this is something that, you know, in every district that it exists in, that's part of why that it's beneficial is there's many, many, many educational benefits to having children, you know, come together the way they do in that program. And that's the core benefit. But beyond that, those provide opportunities for districts to do things that provide services for the children that live in that locality and students of that, you know, of that school system that live in another locality to benefit them. So this district.
Was it through the crack schools, like you got the educators from that come in and.
Well, and additional benefits are reading consultants, you know, services that come in. They help all the kids. You know, social work access of all the kids. There's just a lot of benefits to being part of that.
I understand. I'm not questioning the progress. I'm saying that, you know, when this was discussed, it was the money was going to eventually, you know, we're going to be getting the money and it was going to offset the, the, the tax burden of all of this. And if we're using this to spend it on things that are outside of the budget or over and above the budget, then the town's not seeing the eighty thousand.
More than because you're getting the cost avoidance of this whole room of people needed a tutor to work with them. And that was needed by the children in talent and they paid for it with those funds. We would have had to have asked for those funds. So it actually lowers your budget request every year because we don't have to ask.
That's the piece that I'm looking for though. That's the part, that's the question that I'm asking.
Otherwise, we would be asking for it if we didn't get it for this. It lowers your budget request. And a three, one, three would be higher than that because we would not have the opportunity to do this. It lowers your budget request and a three-one-three would be, uh, higher than that because we would not have the opportunity to do this.
So, um, all right, pardon?
Yes. I know when you said, when you said that you were confused on this, what he just said.
All right, um, the next, the next one with the budget, question twenty, the certified fed is increasing but F T Es. These positions are existing F T Es that were once, that were at that time falling under the certified line but are now classified outside that line under the hair support staff, non-part of the paraprofessional gardening unit. I didn't see a reduction in the headcount file anywhere, so where would we see the offsetting reduction? If they're, if we're adding some.
There was a, it's not a F T E reduction, it's, it's the certi, it's those two groupings. So there is a shift in the number of the, the one grouping and then there's a, a constant change in.
Are they in the same line item from headcount perspective?
I think they're, they're in two different, two different places, certified and uncertified. So I think the question was, if it goes along with that, Penex for payroll, Fed is increasing F T Es for this program are going from fifty-four point nine-three at the V O E to fifty-seven point seven-eight. Um, that, the shift of that from fifty-four to fifty-seven is, is a shift from that certified to the other one.
Is the other line certified?
The two lines are, um, certified and uncertified. So I would have to, you know, the, that's the shift that occurred between these lines.
That's what I'm saying, I don't see the shift.
Well, because you're also looking at, I mean, I, I can give you an explanation of that in writing. If you want, but the, the, between this, uh, special superintendent's proposed budget and the Board of Ed budget were also grant shifts. And decisions went to and from brand. The F T E sheet is a tough one to follow because there's a lot of shifts, both on and off brand. You might not see exactly where it fell, but I can articulate it in writing.
I would appreciate it. Uh, thank you very much. The counselor that we were paying for at the, at, uh, who was T M S, the grant, funded the grant, go away with that?
Yes, I had, uh, I wrote a grant that lasted for a few years and it was supplemented by, uh, by R, R S R.
I remember what it was now, thank you. Um. Uh, questions thirty. Okay, in question thirty, um, we talked about the technology repair and maintenance. You, you mentioned what it was used for in the answer, but you did not mention why it's going up.
For which question?
Question thirty, you mentioned what it was being used for, but not why it's going up.
I didn't know that because it was virtually nothing last year.
Oh.
It was like a couple thousand dollars and now. So it looks like it was a huge increase with the five hundred eighty-eight percent, but it went home virtually nothing until last year.
I didn't see it, I didn't see both together for a reason.
We could do this all day. Like, this is like, um. So in the next line, thirty-one, we talked about transportation. Um, the special education transportation, is that accounted for in idea or any of the other, um, any of the other grants or something?
No, to, no, not that enough. I mean, you know, uh, transportation strictly, you've got some, uh, for the student who's outplaced after a certain threshold, but not.
Four times. Okay, and why is general heads, that, that transportation going up? That's contractual? I can't spell. Sorry. And then fourth question thirty-two, the social worker that we're talking about there, is that the counselor that's mentioned in question twenty-five? In that, in that question, you said it was going to the, um, general budget? And this one is saying it's going to, um, is it the grant or the budget? Which one is this, uh?
Three-two.
Social worker position?
There's more than one social worker, I think one of them might, might be, but, I mean, brand. We put it to brand from this, we do to the V O E, so I don't think they're the same. We have more than one.
Hopefully we'll have more than two, I may have, but, um. Okay, this is kind of a weird question too, but this is just because I'm apparently aged and I've got children that's not through this system. Esteem has been around forever. Is there, that, is this the best program that we can be using? I will tell you, my children still to this day cannot listen to the song, right, guys? They are traumatized beyond belief, it's on the radio and they're like, Charles, mom, was there, Alex almost thirty. So, um, this team program is, is the, is this the best program that we can be using, like, for this?
This is the first time I've heard of anyone having trauma.
Oh my God, I don't know if you, their phone numbers, you guys had some feedback on this question?
So I will just say that I have had this conversation with the teachers. Um, and just so that you know, the majority of fifth grade teachers believe strongly in the school program. It has been updated year over year, so it does now look into things that were not issues, you know, before. They're obviously dealing with things, you know, with the, you know, the newer issues. Um, I know that, that the music has been.
How much did they change, did they change the song yet?
But the, but the meat of the program is something that the teachers do still strongly believe in. And, um, I know that this year they were not able to have a piece of that, which was the, um, small group breakout that have the peer interaction. And that was, they found that really lacking. And also, it's not just a benefit for the fifth grade students, but it's a benefit for the high school students to be able to deal with the fifth grade students and what they're dealing with. So I think that question has come up a lot, but I think that that question mainly is around the music. The program itself has updated year over year.
Let's tell her, man, I bet you never knew the song would be used like that. I, I'm not kidding, my kids will literally run to each other when they see it and like hug and turn around, it's, it's horrible.
It was hot.
That may have been a good one, yeah.
I mean, it's trauma and I, Danny's standing embarrassed my child, so I enjoyed it for that.
It's, it's like, I can tell you, it was trauma, trauma. We were just talking about it not that long ago, I came on and like.
I will, I will, everyone knows that that is called trauma recovery, see.
Exactly.
I will ask you to the new.
Okay, um, with T H S advisory curriculum, what is the advisory curriculum?
Well, you know, advisory is the high school program that helps, um, kids avoid the destructive decision making. Sometimes it relates to, you know, it's usually thematic and usually relates to something that is happening in that span of the year. So if it's during prom, they might do a program for driving drunk and, you know, the, of that, you know, the effects of that. They're working with Orco, um, which is a suicide prevention group and they will be doing, they do workshops with that. Um, so the advisory basically is designed to address the kids' needs development in high school and the different things they face. Having said that, one of the objectives of the district is to create, uh, a cohesive K-12 for going focusing on certain core areas. So you can't talk to a kindergartner about something that, you know, socially, you can't talk to a first grader about social media the way you talk to a senior about social media. So the long game endeavor is to create a K-12 that developmentally addresses these areas. So, but at the high school advisory strictly, those kinds of programs should be back developmented.
Okay, thank you. Um, fourth question thirty-three. We talked about pre-K busing for two and a quarter hours at thirty-seven thousand dollars. Is this built into the, um, the amount of money that we're recovering for the F R C program for people? Is this built into the tuition or is this something that's assumed in general?
The pre-K two-point-two-five, I mean, I, I believe that's in the general budget, I have to go back and look, but I think it's in the general, but.
That's probably not F R C law, right, pre-K, that's probably.
Yeah, it's not F R C, it's our. Yeah, if it were F R C, that would be, the F R C people drive, you know, some stuff. So pre-Ks.
Um, next question there is five thousand dollars from T I S for cleaner. I think that was part of, but that was part of the capital budget plan also, the replacement of two floor cleaners. So, um, five thousand dollars in here on top of the replacement for the floor cleaners. Is that a tenant issue at all?
Probably. The only thing that, that I know of is a floor cleaner would be a tenant issue. But what's, what, what question are you at?
One hundred and thirty-four, fourth question thirty-four.
D Q three-four, I have to jump to this.
I know that there's two floor cleaners in the.
So, um, yeah, I mean, a floor cleaner would, would probably be either a walk, it might be, would be a walking one or a tenant. So I have to check. Five K for a floor cleaner, yeah.
So is that a duplication then?
I would have to ask you, I can ask you back.
Just to make a quick point, that we are getting close to ten o'clock and we're trying to keep things safe. Um, and I was just wanting to tell everybody we have this opportunity to ask a question.
If you still have questions, I'm impressed.
I, I'm, I'm full of questions.
I'm working on it, um, um.
I just want to make sure we're saying that for your budget questions and not getting too deep into the programmatic. And, you know, I think a lot of the order to the charity answers of the worthwhileness of the programs they promoted in the budget. So I think it's, I'm trying to keep us on track with that. That's just, you know, at least my perspective on the general terms of talking about budget questions.
Um, okay, question thirty-nine talks about desktop replacements or technology replacements. Um, you had mentioned something, is this just the staffing replacements? Because, uh, it also says that, um, a bunch of the high school said that they don't really use the desktop computers because everybody has their own laptops now.
Um, I think in the answer, it's, that it talks about they're phasing them out. So, you know, the old desktops get, that you know probably that from even the ones you buy at home after a few years, they become desktops. So they are being phased out. The only thing is some of the ones, I believe, um, some of those units have to have these stronger processors. So like CAD, you know, certain art visual graphics programming, they still may need the, the more powerful desktops because you can buy a more powerful desktop for that purpose, cheaper than you can buy anything else. But the general laptops are fully dated, like, and so giving to the high school kid. Now, a lot of their textbooks, the science textbooks are mostly all virtual, they're all digital. So they open their science textbooks on their laptops, you may have to go run an engineering CAD and then they do a few. But the ones that used to be used for lab-related items, who are processing, would be getting phased out.
So those are, that were not repurchased, you know, so.
Well, I mean, I, I, specifically, which part of this are you talking about? There's, the, you know, overall, they're getting phased out. You're talking about D Q thirty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, so considering technology, it's, it appears during last night's discussion, so I spoke to several peers really. I mean, right, well, I mean, yeah, it will be phased out. But they have to maintain some of them for things like CAD, engineering graphics.
Okay, um, you have the list on here for the vacancies. And this one is actually one of the things that I think, uh, really kind of just drives me crazy from a budgeting perspective. There are twenty-five vacancies on here, two of them go back to twenty-twenty, two of them are current in twenty-twenty-two and twenty of one of them are from twenty-twenty-one. But I believe all the vacancies are, were in the salary list at a hundred percent. So that's assumption that we're gonna hire twenty-five people day one. And I think our salaries on average were at three-point-three million dollars. Or since twenty-fourteen, we've over budgeted in salaries, averaging out to about four-hundred and something thousand dollars a year that we're under. So I push back and challenge the idea that we are going to be one-hundred percent fully staffed on day one and not account for staggering of hiring to account for that.
This includes people right now, we're not hiring day one, we're hiring now. We're trying to get these people in place now. Twenty-twenty-one is still the pandemic. And a seven-year trend is four years of massively fluctuated items. So it's very difficult to, to say we have that sort of trend when that situation is at play.
Even if I backed up the big year though?
Well, four big years, so, one-point-two million. I mean, if you look at, if you wanna go back, you know, far enough, the years that were not in these crazy years, we're, we're pretty modest and that's what they'll continue to be, you know? So fifteen, sixteen was thirteen thousand, fourteen, fifteen, eleven, uh, thirteen, fourteen, seventy-five, twelve, thirteen, sixteen. So then go north of that, sixteen, seventeen is when you start getting into state budget crisis. That was four-forty-four and that was one-point-two. But in that Q and A, I described that year, we actually weren't spending until the budget referendum passed in November. There were whole backs to.
That's not, I'm not talking about the total back that left, I'm looking at just the salary.
But that would affect salaries in the hiring for that year too. That would affect all of them. And so the vacancies right now, we do plan on filling all those vacancies. That's a pandemic-related issue.
I'm gonna hold you to that then, because every single year we are under budget, on salary. Everyone, going back to twenty-thirteen, with the exception of the year to hire the seventeen people, every year. So in the, in the non-government world, you're, you don't ever account for a hundred percent of staff from day one to day three-hundred-and-fifty, whatever. You don't, because it never ends up that way. And that's why I think we have these numbers here, so the vacancies and the amount of people that are out there, that is a concern for me because that also leads into the medical and the fika and everything else. This is where we see a lot of money left every year. It's concerning that we're budgeting a hundred percent of twenty-five people and no other vacancies, no, no other numbers out there. But I'll move on. Um, the, in question forty-two, there is talk about the, um, the, it says the eighteen thousand is mostly for the director receiving a seventeen thousand dollar adjustment to salary instead of less than overtime. So if that's the case, do we have an offsetting reduction in overtime in the budget?
Uh, you're, which one are you asking about?
One of the question forty-two. But this, to me, is reading that we're given this person a seventeen thousand dollar raise.
So the average over the span of time this person's been hers is four thousand. And the person was hired exceptionally low. So this individual was hired very low, under the understanding that if the individual proved themselves that they would come up to the same level as any other person in that class. So that was bringing that person up to the rightful place in that class of job position. If we didn't do that, we'd lose that person likely. And that person actually saves far more in the grants that that person writes and the hours that person does and the things that person has done for this district. So, you know, that's, that's one of these individual contracts, but these, that individual was hired very low for the class and actually is put right about the exact same space as the other people in the other class position. We didn't do that, we'd lose exponentially more than that.
Okay, but the, the thing here says is less overtime, the seventeen thousand, less overtime.
If that individual had been paid for overtime, it would have been more.
So were they paid for overtime or is it?
This one, I gotta interject.
I'm sorry, just as a point of information, are we going to be allowed to go back again, like you had originally stated?
Yeah, I think we should begin with a second round of questions. There are councils in the second round.
Yeah, I have a second round of questions. I asked three, two, so.
So I think we, we need to move to Council of Luba to, this one, yeah, it's one question to get, so it's the second round, so it's, so it's questions.
Oh, I'm second round.
Okay. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Trump. The main question that I have here, and I'll try to be succinct with it, is that, uh, for Dr. Willard, the, the budget that's proposed here, uh, that, and everything that we're discussing is based upon your assessment of the needs of the, uh, of the, of the schools and based upon your priorities as far as what is most important to the least important, uh, is that, that's pretty much accurate. And that's how the budget works, correct?
I would say the one you're looking at is the, to the Board of, uh, Board of Education.
Okay, well, but as far as, when, when decisions are made regarding, uh, like, when you first come up with a budget, you prioritize your needs and prioritize, prioritize things and then you recommend that to the Board of Education, correct?
The superintendent's proposed budget.
Yes. And then that's when the Bo, uh, Board of Education discusses it. And then as cuts, uh, as the Board of Education comes back and says that they are looking for additional cuts to be made, then that's where you take that second look and that's where you, again, re-prioritize everything and sort of judge accordingly as far as, okay, if I, they want me to cut certain areas, this is where I would need, this is what I would need to cut back, correct?
Yeah, I mean, most explicitly, typically what happens is it's just they don't agree. Okay, so they might choose something that I wouldn't have reduced, I would have reduced it, or choose something to save that I might have saved and save it, but my job is to propose the things and then go with the boards, you know, overall, we want it from, you know, what they bring is like.
Okay, uh, and then when it comes down to, so say, uh, looking for, if, if there was a need where, you know, say we come back and the, the town council comes back and says, okay, we're, we're looking for additional cuts. We're looking for, and again, we have no say as far as how those cuts. and the town council comes back and says, okay, we're looking for additional cuts, we're looking for, and again, we have no say as far as how those cuts are made. We can just simply say, we'd like to see three percent. And I'm just using it, don't kill me, because I'm just looking at that and throwing that out as a figure. But we say three percent, then again, that comes down to your priorities as far as what, what you, in conjunction with the Board of Education, feels appropriate, correct?
You guys will decide where you think it should be, or has to consider.
Okay, and then so that is, so when you hear the, I mean, the thing that concerns me the most is that the statement of where that general education would suffer the most. And that's where they're gonna, we're gonna really get hit. I think that was repeated maybe fifteen times throughout this evening. That doesn't have to necessarily be, that's based upon the assessment, your assessment in conjunction with Board of Education. But mainly with your recommendations, if there is something that you felt that really the general education needed to be protected in certain ways, there'd be other ways that you could find around to protect those positions, is that about accurate?
No. I would say that the special education is one that is mandated by the IEPs and the PCTs, right?
I understand.
General education typically takes the hit. And over, you know, exposure of time, that is evidenced, we can go back and provide plenty of evidence of that. And that's, that's just generally how that falls, because you cannot really modify special education.
Roger, I understand that, but I'm saying that if there was something where, okay, we really feel that this, this program is something that we really need to keep, then let's find other areas that we may be able to find savings. There's other ways that you could say, okay, well then, this is something that we really may not need. This is something that we may can cut over here, just make these savings over here. Instead of, instead of spending, instead of making a cut on the general education aspect of it, let's try and find other cost savings based upon your priorities as far as trying to keep that general education positions, that there's other ways that you can find these savings if necessary, rather than making those cuts. I mean, that's just general budgeting. I mean, I've been in a position before and I think it's something that, if it's something that, as I would put in terms that I know, that's mission essential and this is something that we need to get done and that this is something that we want to make sure, I'll find other ways and I'll find other savings to keep that in. Is that, is that about accurate?
Well, I mean, you're talking about when you're handed that you're gonna have to make a cut, you make a cut.
Right.
Yes, but what we're, like, what happens over a span of years, again.
Do we need to make a motion, Justin?
No.
I will say, Dr. Will, I know you're accurate for reasons, but I think Sophia and Jacob both want to write some initial insight. So if you're okay with yielding for that.
No, I.
Well, I was just gonna say that the reason the general education is the kind of go to or the place where it gets cut first is because that's the most malleable. The other areas are mandated and not flexible. So if the state says we have to do X, Y, Z for this education or other areas, we have to do it. That money has to go there.
Right, tracking, I mean, I understand that, but what my point is though is that if these other educational programs, so I know special ed is something that we can't touch.
Sure.
Some special ed is, is not calling a sacred cow, but it is. We can't, we can't touch that because of the mandates and everything else.
Yeah.
So then, but then you're saying that the general ed, ed is what we go to next. Why? Isn't there other areas that you can look at, that you, where you can find other cost savings so that we don't have to cut the general ed? Aren't there other ways where in a general budget, everything else is open, other than special ed, everything else is fair game? So why go to general ed and start cutting these teachers' positions or other positions when you may be able to find other cost savings?
But I think we did that. I think that's what I was praising Ms. Griffin for, she exactly did that. She, she looked at all these cost savings that didn't affect the student directly by, by looking at the pensions we were looking at and, and the, the healthcare costs and so yes, we did that. But so your question is, yes, we would do that and we have done that. But the only other place to look is the general education.
Okay, because I mean, the concern that I have is this, you know, this is my third time around on this. And every time that we, whenever we come back, whenever the town councilors come back and said, and we say, look, we need, taking into consideration Mr. Khan's prior position, you know, there, there are certain things that we just can't put this forward, but faith. So we need to come back and make certain, you know, we need to get down to a certain amount that we feel is appropriate. The next position that always comes back is, well, we are cutting these teachers' positions. That instead of, well, let's look at other savings in other areas, because it seems like the teachers' positions are like, and I'm not saying that this is going to happen, but I'm saying that if, if it is something that what I've foreseen and the pattern that I've seen over the past period of time is you're going for, we're going to cut these positions, which are the most, you know, the most offensive positions, because we don't want to cut teachers. But that's always the first thing thrown out, well, then we're gonna have to lose these people. And it puts us over sort of a, a, a difficult position, because then it makes it look like, okay, we, we want to cut teachers when we really don't, but we're asking you to find other savings. So that, I, I mean, I don't know if I'm making myself.
Well, you are, it depends on what you're talking about. If you're talking about fifteen thousand dollars, you can find that. But if you're talking about, you know, two million dollars, you cannot find that in the state office, you cannot find that. And, you know, to that point, there's no director, one director in here, you know, there's no social studies administrator, you know, there's science one of that. So, you know, with these, this does not, this has teachers in lieu of other things. There's always this objective of protecting the jobs that are, you know, having interaction with the kids, so it's not the first go to. General education can also mean after school things. It can be things that impact the child and the general population. So you're right, it's about what, what do you value more than something else, that'll always be what you have to do. But it's usually, to answer that question, usually it does go towards whatever the general ed stuff going to be. You know, if you're after school programming or late lessons or whatever, it's all, that's all general, considered general.
Okay, all right, and then, I'm sorry, Ms. Marie, if I may, Mr. Chair, if there was anything that you wanted to add to that or?
Well, you, you kind of said my point, my, my idea was that kind of depends on how much is produced, you know, like I said, if it's a small cut, we could probably find. I, you know, I was gonna say that if, if there does come back with a reduction, I want to take a look again at some other trend items. I thought we did a pretty good job, but definitely be the first thing I would go to. But I would also add that at the point where we are now, I don't think that it could go a whole lot further without dipping into general education funding. Now, you as a counselor, your position is a bit different than ours, but as a board member, I would just counsel you that that's kind of where we are at this point.
And, and I understand that and I appreciate that, it's not something that I think that the budget is outrageous, but I'm just saying that this is in the pattern that's been recognized. And it's something that's difficult for us because, you know, it makes us look like we don't appreciate the positions and we don't understand the, the impact that it would have. But it's something that we need to, we need to balance out, because while your obligations are to look at the board and look at the education of the students, which is something that you've done an outstanding job on, we have to take a more holistic approach and we need to take a look at that. And that's why it's something that we need to take a look at certain things and push on certain issues more. But I, I mean, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Councilor Luba, Councilor Murray, Albert, will we die here all for a second time?
Tolland is known for quality schools, people move into Tolland for the schools. I moved into Tolland for schools, many of my friends and neighbors did too. How has the Board of Ed budget with the trends that you show in your budget, with a five year increase of zero point seven four percent and a nine year increase of one point five percent, impacted the quality of education in these classrooms?
Well, you know, it, because the problem that you face in anything like that is that it's, it's kind of like a, you know, slow lead of your programming. You'll notice where the middle school had a much more robust schedule with more schedule structures in it provided more support a decade ago. And part of that is your special education requirements, your mandates, all those things increased over the last two decades. So anything you used to have was whittled away with respect to, you know, things that had to be drawn away towards these mandates. But on top of that, if, you know, if you have a cycle of, you know, budgets that are not maintenance budgets, that's why it's important to keep some, you know, some trend of trying to make sure that we're maintaining versus the, you know, massive fluctuations to zeros and increases and then zeros and all that. You know, you see that in things, you know, that I've talked about where, you know, you don't have the world language resources anymore. You, you know, you don't have, you know, the, the programming that used to have. The middle school had team leadership as a program, skill set of lessons, we've just gotten back. That's, you'll notice, its survival relies on this budget right now. It was gone for many decades and there were three or four programs in the middle school that were designed to actually address social emotional needs of kids and they were reduced over that span of years slowly. So there was a, there was a teacher dedicated to teaching just those classes. So team leadership, skill spread lessons, and there was one other. And that, that position disappeared. And so slowly over time, if, you know, you, if you look back, there, there really are a lot of programming things that were both social emotional supports and other things that no longer exist. Now, you have an excellent school system, but that's what happens over a long span of time is you don't notice how much of an impact it's having unless you look back and, you know, at a certain point in time, say a decade ago, you'd notice, wow, there really was a lot of these other things and where did they go? Wow, we did have world language across the whole district, where did it go? You know, wow, we did have, you know, more, you know, more support in these particular places, where did that go? So it's, some of it is a natural adjustment for enrollment that now, you know, you're at a precipice with. But other things were just because, you know, there were just budgets that were a little lower than the maintenance. And so it's good to have a stable budget cycle rather than big fluctuations.
How can the quality of education be improved and improve in a cost effective way?
I think that, you know, one of the things, your district, your town has done an amazing job on the town side of USIP, of ECHIP, of, you know, cooperative agreements and arrangements of, of shared pricing for energy, that type of thing. In the school district, cost avoidance programs that have been put in place have been very good at helping mitigate and keeping your dollars being maximized, but that, that is running up against the edge of what it can do now. So a, you know, a, a, I guess, any, any variable budget right now would hit you right where you don't want it. That, it's good to keep some trend of, of modest budgets rather than fluctuate up and down. So, you know, we've gotten a lot of supportive mileage and cost avoidance. I think we're at the maximum edge of what cost avoidance can provide. And if you go back years and years ago, the presentations I was doing, we were moving towards creating cost avoidance programs, which we have done. And then we were going to move forward into trying to do tuition programs and things like that, which we are, you know, looking at. And so one of the big pillars was cost avoidance, the other one was stopping attrition, stopping kids from leaving, which we're gonna want to make sure you continue to do because the stakes are extremely high for that. And then making it a place people might want to actually pay you to come to is the third wave of that. And so, you know, we've been able to do maximize your dollars with the cost avoidance. We don't want to impact that negatively. I know some people sometimes will look at us and say, why do you have two, say, people in people's services? One of them maintains those cost avoidance programs and without that person or thing, that those would start to collapse and you would end up paying far more than what you paid that person.
So you said there that the cost avoidance measures have run off against what we can expect to achieve there. What other elements are involved in this budget that are meant to improve the quality of education in a positive way?
So, you know, the, the, the math position that's in there, for instance, it's covering three very important places. One, it's covering numeracy coaching, which we have to pay for outside of district if we didn't have in districts, to use as an example. It also, you're not gonna get the honors and the bridge courses without it and those directly benefit kids. In the high school, they benefit them in better performance in their transcripts and better placements in college. And this is very, you know, very effective use of, of funding for that. And in the middle school, they allow us to create the math structures that provide more of the approach that kids can take things at their ability level, otherwise they're, you know, on a homogeneous kind of setup, which is not good for kids. So it helps you avoid kids slipping into intervention needs and then ultimately it can help avoid special education designations. Maintaining the programs that this budget invests in means that we can maintain phonics. And those phonics programs help us avoid dyslexia issues. The state of Connecticut had hearings on dyslexia a year and a half ago and the stakes changed highly for that. You can have, if kids are outplaced or outside services for dyslexia, it's at a massive expense for the district. So, you know, doing the phonics programs and maintaining those programs, which this budget does, greatly prevents the, the situation where kids will not get those skills as they walk up the grades. And it greatly reduces the chance that they will need those outplacement or other kinds of service skills contracted out. So that, the budget has all kinds of things in it. So to go back to Ms. Murphy's question, sometimes it's kind of like, hey, what does that program do anyway? Every one of those programs has a very distinct purpose right now and they all protect the district and kids from costing you more in the long run if they're not provided. And that could even be in a hearing, if I demand to know what the school district has done to provide my, to my child phonics that would help protect them from having exacerbative issues in dyslexia. If we can't show that we did, that is a one way ticket to having to pay for outside services. And so everything that's in the budget right now with respect to that helps avoid you having other issues.
So if I ask you to quantify, could you quantify how much of this budget helps prevent additional costs?
Yeah, I could, it would take me a little while, but some of the, some of them.
Can you ballpark it?
Well, in one program alone, I would say a million.
Okay.
In another program, life skills program, you used to spend one point six million on, on a very small number and now you spend less than that on a much bigger number, because you have an expanded program in that area. So you're saving at least maybe six hundred thousand in that. So in these two programs alone, it's about one point six million. And then if you did not have this, your issues would be massively exacerbated right now with respect to budgeting. This came at exactly the right time. These structures came in exactly the right time. So those two programs alone are about one point six.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you, just one more for a second. Questions from council members? Councilor Khan?
Is it, your question answered that, that helped me a lot. I'm just gonna quote you, one that we have an excellent system in our town and especially with the special kids. And I do appreciate it. And every kid should be, should be cheated or get the education equality. And even though like now we are doing a, I think we are doing excellent job without twenty six vacancies. And I do thank you. And Lisa, I think your team has done a.
Excellent.
Excellent. Uh, Ashley.
There's a few leases here.
Ashley, I think your team, your team did a good, good job, this is the first time I'm looking at it. But I think your team worked hard. And I think you guys, I don't know how many of you, got the glove and did a practice on him, so you're lower down a little bit. Could you do a little better job? I think the only thing is like I said. I think I know this person for about, almost about fifteen or sixteen years now, almost about that. So like I know him, his past and everything else, but like, but still, we need a, we don't need a politics in this system. And that's the only thing I said, and I thank every single person here on Board of Education, Dactyl and, and everybody else. I thank you for, for the town, whatever you do. And thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Khan. Eileen, John, you have second round of questions?
I'm gonna, I'm just thinking, everybody just, again, we did a fantastic job, so thank you.
On this time, I will just concur with that, I do appreciate the question, I know we've been gradually getting married towards getting all the information and sharing it. All the information and sharing with one another, using each other's expertise gradually. So hopefully in future years, we'll be able to improve on this, get it in sooner, meet sooner, you know? But I'll, I'll just keep my questions by a couple for someone on the line. So I'll just reach out to you after the meeting, so I can get a little bit on the later side. The only question I have is behind the wall, it's by a sophomore. What is our average increase relative to other districts? I know we're always trying to compete over districts, different quality, but how are we bearing, bearing increases?
I, I think we're, we need to report it. It's, uh, we're very, uh, you know, Vernon would be something like a one point seven. A lot of other sources of that, you know? We're, we're pretty good from Somers to, to Enfield, to, um, to Ellington, to Glastonbury. We, we are either lower or right in the range.
Yeah, right. That's, that's it for me. I'm gonna stay silent for a second, to off-line. But I'll go back around to Counselor Nuccio for a second time.
Thank you. Um, budget question forty-three. And here we're talking about the, um, the, oh my goodness. Literacy House. Yes, and I remember when you first brought that on, it was the intent that was gonna be here. It's a train the trainer program. We were gonna have it for a year, but it was two years, and it's here. It's still here, and in general education, decent thirty thousand. Is this still a train the trainer or are we just like?
Well, I know that, that, that vernacular was used, right? But, um, you know, that was people talking about it. The, the people that, that I, um, when something like that's in the budget, it's because the administrators for that subject area feel it's necessary to be able to achieve what's necessary for the kids in the subject area. So that coach is still needed, comes from the literacy house. And it's not the same exact population. Good. Special education literacy house is getting phased out. But, uh, general education literacy house is still needed. And they, they use that coaching system.
I just wanted to go to Flor because she just had her hand up as well, so she, she wants to add to this.
I think this is a program, I guess I was always proud of, just in the sense of it helps the gen ed population. We always talk about what we're taking away from the general. So I think we took out the special ed portion because they had that those couple of years. Am I correct on that? Still in there.
It's, uh, this, what we did was that.
Oh, that went to the ER.
Yeah, the ER, it went to the ER, but that one is being, the reason why that one is fitting into the ERF is that won't be moved in the future. So you're not climbing out of a hole on that. But the general ed one maybe needed for a while more. And that's how the, you know, direct.
Alright, so that's, um, I'd like to, you know, for talking about that. I, from talking to the administrators, I felt it was important to keep that for the gen ed population. And we were, that's why we moved the other part to the ERF. For if we can. You were gonna say some. It's half of what we had in previous years too. I think we kind of, it's more of a part-time basis that any consultant will be coming out. So we kind of have phased it down a little bit, but.
What was it called? The sunset?
The terminology was sunset.
It is not half of what it's been in the past in special.
And it, and it's what they're asking.
Okay, uh, question forty-seven. This was with the laptops here. In the notes, it says there are, in year two, the outgoing grade twelve laptops will become the spare parts slash stockpile. But those laptops are two years old. So if I'm looking at your grid here, the grade twelve laptops are two years old. But we're buying new ones for the ninth grade. So why are we, um, why are we not giving the two-year laptop, laptop to grade twelve to grade nine? Why are we buying?
Well, for a couple of reasons. What those do is, the ones that are, that is one in a year in the cycle. And I was trying to know if this involved, that one year in the cycle is going to be used for, um, parts, but also for swap-out laptops for the entire district. So when the kids come with something that's configured, figured wrong or something screwed up, they bring it into the central warehouse for it and swap it to place. They get one of these laptops. So it, it helps the kid, because the kid can't hand over the laptop and then not have it for two years. So it's swat-, it's one of the ones that's used for parts, for screens, and for swapping out when kids have problems. And if you, you know, think about the, the size of it now, you know, hundreds and hundreds of kids with these, that even if one percent or ten percent have an issue, they need to be able to swap it out right away so the kids can continue to learn. Having said that, they also can't take a set, a two-year-old laptop and a six-year-old laptop by the time they graduate. That, that won't work because the software slows down, everything's, you know, six years in laptop world is a very long time. Especially with the kind of software that kids are using at the high school. So that's generally, you know, that one year, yes, those are cycled into the, um, you know, to the ones that are used to swap out when people are having problems for all of the students and all of the teachers in high school and even on some of the other students, and to the parts. And if you do those parts in-house, it's way less than people allow.
Thank you. Um, question fifty-two talks about line three hundred and purchased professional technical services. And it starts out by saying all of these items are important but critical. And my question on this is, I, I understand all of these might be important, but we typically not spent the money in this line item historically. I looked at my trend sheet for three hundred. Pretty much every year, we are under budget on this one.
Well, I mean, I think it, it does have to do with, you know, how that line fluctuates. But I can only tell you what's in it. With respect to trend, you know, that would be something that, that FSC would be looking at over a span of time. But the ID support, you know, that, that type of thing is based on how many problems you're having. And it's Aruba, HP point service, Wi-Fi units. You know, they all, they all, when things are going great, you can, you know, go with a certain amount. But when things go south, you can't run with that Wi-Fi anymore. Things are not wired to walls. So there needs to be enough in that to be able to flex to whatever the issues are. And at the end of every year, you know, new next support, all that stuff. That never goes away. And it, whatever is, if there is residual, that's used on some investment to try to prevent us from having issues occasionally or systemically with the software. So.
Okay, um, I think that, I just think that, you know, typically we never spend that money. I think there might be something of an opportunity in there. Same thing with the next line, line three thirty. It says, uh, last year we did not use all of this line, but as we get back to normal and hopefully transfer, transition away from COVID impact down these lines, we will begin using more of these funds. Going back to twenty thirteen, only one year did we actually use all the funds that are in that line item. So that's, that's another one where I don't think it's COVID-related. I think we just, we have never spent the money in that in the last, um, nine.
Well, and it may have to do with magnitude too. Do you have a couple of years to look here? Like, it's not a ton, but yeah, it's interesting.
Same thing with line three thirty-two, consulting. It talks about the last few pandemic years preventing us from utilizing the money. But only one year since twenty thirteen have we actually used the amount that's budgeted in line forty-two, three forty-two. This is specifically was talking about, this is where my question came from about the Tyler Technologies earlier. So that might be an opportunity in there too. This one, the next one is line four thirty, repairs and maintenances. Between the years of fifteen, sixteen, and sixteen, seventeen, the budget jumped eighty thousand dollars in that one year. And every year since then, we have not spent the money in this, um, in this budget. I mean, in this budgeted line item for repairs and maintenances. So, um, again, I think it hasn't been fully expended prior to the pandemic, um, at that point either. So the question here didn't really seem like it got answered. It seemed like it's a valid question because we're not, not spending the money there.
Well, I, I think the, the thing about that is, you're talking about eighteen months in advance. And so when you talk about there may be something like that. At the end of the year, you know, when you take out some of these crazy years, there hasn't been a lot left. And generally, whatever is not spent by that department on whatever they have to spend it on for the building facilities, the town will be asked for it in capital over a longer span of time. And so, you know, you, there's no perfect way to do that in those lines, and it is eighteen months in advance. And I would argue that at the end of the year, those are very well utilized. And them being well utilized means the town doesn't have to deal with them in another way. And that has been the record here, especially with the most recent. So these, you know, the older, the other people were great. The people we have now are helping make sure the town isn't in a curvage or opposite of the way.
My last question is around, um, I don't know if you will happen to have this number or not, Griffin, but I think somebody asked earlier where you were looking to end at the end of the year. And, um, I haven't been looking at the numbers that were there and that. But my take on all of this is that, I know we like to talk about budget to budget. But again, outside of the government world, we don't look at it that way. We look at actuals to budget. So if we look at last year's actuals to just the budget that was approved for this current year that we're in, it was a four point oh seven percent increase. With eight hundred thousand dollars left at the end of the year, plus an eight hundred thousand dollar increase. It's a one point six million dollar jump from actuals to where you currently are. Before, we look at another three point one three percent. And as Sammy said, this is, the three point one three is, it's a little hard for me to swallow right now with that. But, um, I'm really curious as to how we're gonna end the year, if we think that we're actually gonna spend the money or not, and what's gonna be left. I'd like to know that number as soon as we can, a projected number on that, before we get to the point of actually debating the full budget when we get it. Because I'm struggling with the three point one three percent, knowing what everybody else is going through right now from a program perspective. And I do not challenge the idea that, uh, that education is not important for this town. It is. It's almost eighty percent of our total budget. So, um, I'm just concerned that there's a bunch of places in here that we haven't spent the actuals historically. And I just don't know if I've done everything that I need to get comfortable with three point one three.
I just don't, I don't know that you can really use to that. And you're talking about the balances left at the end of the year last year. The buses weren't running at all, things like that. There were four years that did have balances, but there are good explanations for that. And years around that, there were not. And that, that is, you know, data that I can put out there tomorrow, exactly what it ended at. Town departments ended with two percent, between two percent, three percent in a year last year. So considering the department. Right, and what I'm saying is that was a function of the situation we were in. And I think that's why I would, I would be reluctant to use it as a reason not to say, well, for a bunch. Having said that, you know, a certain way we understand where you're coming from. I just think that those, those, those are tough things to use as a reason for that. And to ask for, you know, a projection right now, say, February, March, to exact end of the year, we just had seven outplacements right now. We're at a negative one point at this moment in time. So, you know, that's a new place to be. And that's, that's because of the fluctuations due to the pandemic too. It would be extremely difficult to tell you, you know, exactly where that was gonna end. And use that as a basis for not voting for the budget, that would be difficult. Because we can't come up with that. Not, not in any exact form, given we had seven outplacements in two months. That's just hard. So, you know, I, I would offer the other year, or did you do diligence? And you've made some good points, I'm sure.
I think just, um, maybe to get Tammy more comfortable. I think, um, probably our February numbers, Dr. Willett, because we should have ours yesterday. Yes, should have done. I know we talked, um, a little bit in, um, yesterday that there were some items that should probably be encumbered that hadn't been yet. So I think we might be able to get a little bit of a better snapshot, you know, at the end of February. But I do think that, um, we definitely are on track to basically spend pretty much our, our budget. We, we did talk about that actually just yesterday. We, we were working off the January numbers. But, you know, what, what accounts we still had that still had quite a bit in them available? And what are, you know, kind of the plan was that we were gonna be going forward with projects, with, you know, things like that. So I, 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 yeah, we really can't give a, a true number just yet. It's too early. But I think we can probably be a little bit more, um, get a better estimate at least after February. We got time, so thank you.
Any other questions for councilors before, like, six? We'll adjourn.
A second now?
Cool, really? Adjourn at ten thirty-one, seconded by Counselor Nuccio. If there are all in person, we'll do a whistle, all of the papers, if you want, I say aye, aye, or. If those have questions, alright, here's, adjourned at ten thirty-one.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great day.